Evening, everybody, and welcome. I know we have millions of Americans watching tonight, so let's stand and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening and welcome on this cold January evening as our temperatures drop. Tonight, we'll open up with public comment, but before we start, we do have three public hearings on SADs tonight, and if you want to talk about that SAD, you should stay and do it during the public hearing. And our clerk, could you expand on that just a little bit before we get started?
Right. Good point. There's public comment. There's three times to speak.
Two SADs.
There's public comment, which is the first thing on the agenda. That's for general discussion of items of interest to you. Later on the agenda, you'll see the agendas are at the back of the room. Item five is the public hearing on SAD 428. And if you have an opinion or objection concerning that, and you want to preserve that for the record, that has to happen at that public hearing, so not at the public comment earlier. Same thing with item six, public hearing of necessity 429. Comments concerning that need to occur at that moment, if you want to preserve a right to file an appeal. So...
Okay. And there's two SADs. I said three, but there's two public hearings. Thank you. All right. So we'll open it up to public comment. If you have something you'd like to address the board on, please step up to the microphone, and your name and address, please, and we ask you to stay within the three-minute time limit. Thank you.
My name is Greg Kraus. I live at 1375 Aberdovey Place in Bloomfield Village. My question is more procedural question. I noticed that items five and six are both separate agenda items, and so assuming that the plan was to vote on those separately, because the issues with five and six are crossover and are quite intermingled, I'd like to make a request that the board hold their vote on five and six until all of the arguments, both for and against, are heard on each of the special assessment districts, just because of the commonality of the issues involved.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mary Alice Hadduk. I'm a Bloomfield Township resident. Okay? And I'm here to speak about the consent agenda item on the board packet. While making meetings efficient is a common goal, your plans for a consent agenda are problematic for several reasons, but mainly the filter that employees and elected officials determine the importance of a decision for the public without a public review or comment. This is not right in Bloomfield Township because we have decades of poor decision-making. These are just some of the issues. Funding for pensions and retiree healthcare was not paid for when it was booked, so the public had to pay more for a bond and now OPEB at higher costs than it should have been if it had been done right from the beginning. We're talking about a parental leave policy being added outside of the six-year contracts. Elected officials just voted for pay raises outside of the contracts with no ability for the public to weigh in on the dollars and the impact of the policy changes. Residents are being overcharged on water and sewer bills with $20 million sitting in reserves. There have been poor investment returns on many accounts versus national averages with little communication on these results. There is poor transparency on payroll and vouchers every single month. There are no bid contracts for multimillion-dollar purchases. There are outrageous service costs for everything from landscaping to engineering to legal to consultants. And then there are employees who fail to provide the complete information on issues in board packets and fail to update the information on comparable sites like Munitrix. Elected officials fail to use critical thinking skills on many issues and just approve spending with no questions or discussion. Newly elected officials should have questions about procedures and be able to ask questions in line items. A consent agenda would interfere with this. A consent agenda is an attempt by Martin Brook to bundle issues without public commentary. I and many other taxpayers do not trust the members of the administration to act in a fair and transparent way, especially on financial issues and contracts. If you want to shorten meetings, then do so by providing the transparency that the public expects. This is in the form of actions that have been requested for years. Maybe you could do, form a taxpayers advisory group, so you could hear from people for more than the three-minute time allotment. While it is, when it is hard to trust elected officials, limiting the voice of residents is not acceptable. Please do not vote to use a consent agendas on anything financially or contract-related. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments for, under our public comment? If not, we will close. And does anybody want to make any comments from those comments at all, or we'll move on to item number two, approve the board minutes of our December 9, 2024 meeting?
Some moved?
Support.
Support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All passed. Okay. Item number four, fire department's...
Three.
Oh, number three. Thank you. Approve board special meeting minutes of December 18, 2024.
Some moved.
Support?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Item number four. Thank you. Fire Department swearing in ceremony presented by John Leroy, our fire chief. Welcome.
Good evening. Kind of have a few agenda items all lumped under one, so I'm going to introduce the two officers first that will be getting their contracts approved and sworn in tonight. I would like to thank you for being a part of this special occasion tonight. With the upcoming retirement this Thursday of Assistant Chief DeRousse, the retirement over the summer of Operations Officer Kevin Cardinelli, the fire department is in need to make promotions to fill these positions. The Bloomfield Township Fire Department is proud to present to you tonight and officially swear in Ryan Hush as Assistant Chief and Alan Van Heck as Operations Officer. Before that, I would like to give you some background on Battalion Chief Hush and Battalion Chief Van Heck before they are officially sworn in. First is Battalion Chief Ryan Hush. Chief Hush began his career with the Bloomfield Township Fire Department in 1996. During his career with the fire department, Ryan has been involved in many aspects of operations, both on and off duty. He has served in the ranks of firefighter paramedic, hazmat technician on the Oakway hazmat team, lieutenant, and battalion chief. During his spare time, he was elected to the role of union president and served on the Bloomfield Township Fire Department Charities Executive Board for many years. In all of these roles, Chief Hush has excelled in every aspect of every position. Perhaps the most important role Chief Hush has served over the past decade is the head of the fire department grant program. From initially writing the grants to how direct, to now directly overseeing the program, his group has been responsible for over $1.8 million of assistance to firefighter grants administered by the Federal Emergency Management Agency. Tonight, it is my honor to present to you, to be sworn in as the next Assistant Chief of the Bloomfield Township Fire Department, Chief, Battalion Chief Ryan Hush. Next is Battalion Chief Alan Van Heck. Chief Van Heck was hired by the Bloomfield Township Fire Department in 1995. He too has served in numerous roles within the fire department. He has been a paramedic firefighter, training leader, hazmat technician, lieutenant, Oakway hazmat team leader, and battalion chief. During his time off, Chief Van Heck provides education around the country, teaching hazmat classes to other firefighters, United States Customs and Border Patrol agents, and other federal departments. Chief Van Heck has a passion for training and making every firefighter better. He is also the go-to person if any hazmat situation arises within the department or Oakway. If a question arises, Chief Van Heck will always have the answer or know where to get it in a short period of time. It is my honor to present to you Alan Van Heck to be sworn in as the next operations officer of the Bloomfield Township Fire Department.
Thank you, Chief. Okay. At this time, then, I'd like the board to consider approval of the transfer of Assistant Chief employment agreement to Battalion Chief Ryan Hush. Any comments, or can I get a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
I would like to, just a point of clarification, the letters that Chief Leroy read, will those be placed into the packet or meeting minutes? I think it would be nice if we could do that.
Sure.
Sure. That'd be great. Okay. So a motion by trustee Barnett. And is there support?
Support.
Support. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Do you want to do the otha office?
Let's do both.
Do both?
Then I'll head down there.
Okay. And then the second motion is consider approval of transfer of the operations officer employment agreement to Battalion Chief Alan Van Heck. Any other comments? Same thing? We'll have it in the minutes?
Same thing.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Motion? Okay.
Support.
Trustee Murray, support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Great.
Okay. Gentlemen. Just over here. Okay. You both at the same time, okay? Or else I'll say, I state your name, and then you know what to do. Okay. I state your name.
Aye. Alan Van Heck.
Ryan Hush.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States of America.
I'll support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And I'll support the Constitution of the state of Michigan.
I will support the Constitution of the state of Michigan.
And I'll faithfully discharge my duties.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As one Assistant Chief for the Charter Township of Bloomfield?
As Assistant Chief for the Charter Township of Bloomfield.
As the operations officer for the Charter Township of Bloomfield?
As the operations officer for the Charter Township of Bloomfield.
And then, to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability. To the best of my ability.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
If I could please have firefighter paramedic Andrew Van Heck, please come to the front.
If I could just have, on another note, since this is his last board meeting and he's here, I would just like to take a moment to officially thank Assistant Chief Matt DeRousse for his 25 years of service with the Bloomfield Township Fire Department. He has been my rock for the past four years, always making sure everything gets done in handling every situation that arose. He has helped me through some of the most difficult times and always been right by my side for all of them. Words cannot express my gratitude to Chief DeRousse for everything, and we wish him a long and healthy retirement.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Thank you for your services. Okay. Thank you. Next, item number five, public hearing of necessity in Bloomfield Village Special Assessment District, number 428, presented by Jennifer Worthman, our deputy assessor. Jennifer?
Do you want a second to clear out?
Yeah. Hold on just a second, Jennifer. Let's clear the room here, and then we'll get started.
They clean up pretty good. That's what I call it when I'm working with guys. That sounds so surprising. Yeah, we should see, sometime maybe see you when you're out, your uniform.
I don't look nearly as good. Don't look nearly as good.
Pete and Matt, back to back. They were the two that worked with us. It's like really great to get to know them, and they were amazing.
They're good people.
Good people.
Okay. All right. Jennifer, all yours.
Thank you. Today, we're going to look at the Special Assessment District, number 428. This is our public hearing of necessity. First, we'll start with phase three, which is also referred to as the gold phase. This includes Judson-Bradway Bloomfield Village subdivision, as well as Judson-Bradway's Bloomfield Village number one. It is the south side of the village, just north of Maple, kind of right in the middle, as indicated on the map. We're looking at 2.09 miles of public road, which includes Morningview Terrace, Hamilton Road, Overview, Overhill Road, Clifton Road, Bradway Boulevard South, Williamsberry Road North, Glengarry Road North, Cranbrook Cross Road North, Chute and Cross, and Chute Road South. The project consists of pulverizing the existing road and placing new asphalt pavement four inches thick over the aggregate base with full-depth cold milling, asphalt removal, total curb and gutter removal and replacement, total under-drain installment with sotted shoulders. Minor drainage improvements will be made to reasonably assure the drainage of the pavement, and all shoulders and disturbed areas will be covered with topsoil and sod. A maximum five-foot approach will be constructed to existing driveways to provide smooth transition from the newly paved road where necessary. Included a few pictures for review from this section. And this kind of shows, this is the new section on the right. The old fading into the new, one of the newly paved. And then I just included a couple pictures from red and blue section as well, so you can see the newly paved roads. The petition has been confirmed by the township assessor. It's supported by 52% of the homeowners, representing 53.77% of the road frontage. Estimated project cost is $7,565,100. There are 150 parcels in this proposed SAD, which also, we have 150 units of benefit. This is a total assess, or a tentative assessment of $50,434 per parcel receiving the full unit of benefit. The assessments can be financed over 15 years. Interest is to be determined after the bonds are sold, and it is 1% over our bond rate. Tonight, I'm asking that you approve our resolution number two and schedule the first public hearing for final assessment for the first meeting in May. That does differ a little bit from your packets. I consulted with the road commission, and we're just not quite able to make those timelines to get it in April, so we're looking for the first meeting in May. And as well as approve the agreement with the road commission, finalize the plans, and bid the project.
Okay. Anything else, Jennifer?
That's all I have. I am open for questions if you guys have any.
Any questions from the board?
Can we ask questions after public comment?
Sure. That's good. If not, then we'll open it up for a public comment.
Okay.
Okay? So if you are here with regard to the gold section, which is item number five, number 428, please come up and state your thoughts, and we have three minutes. And so we're officially opening the public hearing. So this is an opportunity for the public to come up. If you're for, against, or just have basic comments on this gold section, please step up to the podium.
I would like to make a point of clarification. Are they allowed to make public comment on each items, since there are two different public hearings? So one of the residents made a comments, one of the residents made a comment stating that some of the items are shared, the gold section is rather small, and I would not want to make a decision on the gold section without hearing the concerns on the other section as well. And that public comment has already been made. An individual can come and speak for three minutes about their concerns on section five, correct? And then they can come up on item five, and then they can also make a public comment on item six.
If I understand, do you want me to...
Go ahead, Mark.
If I understand your question correctly, you're wondering if a person in 429 can comment on 428?
Yes.
It is public comment. So it's, public comment is not necessarily limited to those people in that particular SAD. Any member of the public can address it, with the caveat that if you want to protect your right to file any future appeals, you need to speak during the public hearing on your SAD.
Okay. But they can speak on both?
They can speak on both, but I would suggest it might help things if they're going to speak on the first one and the second one. Maybe on the second one, they could just reference what they previously spoke, so we're not repeating ourselves.
Okay.
And so they protect, and so they protect their rights, and they don't say it at the wrong time, and they lose out on protecting their rights, which could be confusing.
Okay. Could you just repeat that to the audience again about, this is your opportunity to speak about an SAD, whether you're in favor or opposed, and that accounts for...
This is the public hearing. So this is the opportunity to provide public comment on each of the two SADs. It's not necessary that you speak only on your particular SAD as a member of the public. You can participate in the public comment, no matter which SAD you're in. But bear in mind that if you're speaking a public comment to preserve your right, whatever interests you have to protect, you need to speak during your particular SAD. You can speak at both, but you need to make sure you speak on your own if you want to preserve your right.
Okay. Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, sir.
Okay. So if you'd like to come up and speak on this gold section, number 428, please come up to the microphone.
Thank you, Mr. McCready. My name is Clay Phillips. My wife and I, Catherine, live at 247 North Williamsberry Road. We've been there for 31 years. We've participated in many of the meetings and dialogues about the road reconstruction project, going back before the earth cooled, it seems. Long time. We don't oppose correction to the roads. What we have learned over time is that there are many process issues, uncertainties, lack of transparency, and a question about even the petitioning process, whether there is a full majority that has been recorded. Main objection is that in that the two sections, blue and pink, have not been finished, there has not been a full audit of those sections, there's not been a full lessons learned, and you're now asking to spend residents' money, our money, to do more road construction for two projects that have not been fully understood. This just doesn't seem right. So we would, we've been part of the team that has asked for a pause. That was not accepted. But what we, what I think I specifically, and my wife and others, think is that there's enough uncertainty in this process and in the facts, you can't go forward and commit our money, $50,000 per household, to something that is not understood. And it may be understood by some people, but it's not understood by the residents. And that points again to what we believe is the lack of transparency, lack of information, lack of communication, and what feels like a push to get this done rather than listening to what people have to say. So my question is, to preserve my right as a homeowner, my wife's right, I have a letter that I've created that has, that identifies five points of concern. Is it just me standing here that gets me now on the dole, so I can go to the tax tribunal if I need to? Or do you need a letter from us? What are the details of the process?
I think we'll, can we address it now after it's closed?
Typically, we hear comments, and then address.
And then we'll address it for you, Mr. Phillips.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I think it does help, though, to clarify that. I mean, your objection now, this is your objection, you can either submit something in writing and not appear here, or you can appear and make an objection on the record as you have, and that preserves it by stating your name and address.
I'll leave this with Mr. McCready.
You. Okay.
We're positive, we're hopeful, but there are concerns.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Phillips.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments on this SAD, item number five, the gold section? If you have any, please step up to the microphone.
Are his questions going to be addressed?
Well, we'll close, we'll close, and then we'll have it, we'll have a discussion amongst the board.
Do we need to keep a list of those? I don't know how that works.
However you like to keep your notes. Yes, sir. Please.
Stack it on up. Come on later. Brian Seymour, I live at 2627 Bradway. And I concurd with his comments earlier. If there's no transparency on the vote itself, there's no transparency or detail, cost breakdowns of the cost, the $7 million or $50,000, how can we approve that? If anyone's going to buy anything, you would not just buy anything blindly. We need to understand where all the costs come from, and other sections were done at a lower cost. Why all of a sudden is our section so much more expensive? So I asked for it to defer until transparency on the vote and the cost are available. And the second thing is, I really don't live in the gold section. My address, as I said, is 2627 Bradway. I should be in the green section. Not that that matters, but it is a second point that I want to bring up. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Okay. Yeah, please step up to the microphone.
Hi. I'm Michelle Stea. I live at 220 North Cranbrook Cross, and I'd like this to serve as my formal objection. I'd also like to discuss the unit of benefit that we've been given, this $50,000 number, which really, for most homeowners, is $70,000, because there's, I'd like to know the actual number of homeowners that can cut a $50,000 check and walk away. So the burden for most of us is $70,000. Now, I'd like to discuss how arbitrarily the village created these different sections, and how many inconsistencies it created in the costs. The blue section has 2.62 miles of road repairs, with a project cost of $8,073,397, while the yellow section has only 2.05 miles of road repairs, with a project cost of $8, 353,116. Yellow is 3.5% higher, but has 22% less area. Blue section is $3,849 per mile, while the yellow is $4,74,691 per mile. This is 32% more per mile in the yellow section. The blue section costs square footage, or excuse me, blue section costs per square foot of frontage is $254. The gold is, I'm sorry, I said that wrong. The yellow cost per square foot of frontage is $774. This is 205% more, and gold is 170% more than the blue section. These numbers are absolutely unacceptable. That's all I have to say.
Good evening. Diane Raffino. I live at 313 North Cranbrook Cross in the village. I'm in the gold section. I was on the road...
Blue section is $3,814,499 per mile, while the yellow is $4,74,691 per mile. This is 32% more per mile in the yellow section. The blue section costs per square foot of frontage is $254. The gold is, I'm sorry, I said that wrong. The yellow cost per square foot of frontage is $774. This is 205% more, and gold is 170% more than the blue section. These numbers are absolutely unacceptable. That's all I have to say.
Good evening. Diane Ruffino. I live at 313 North Cranbrook Cross in the village. I'm in the gold section. I was on the road committee in 2015 when it lost by about 20 votes, and I was a canvasser again this time. And I have to say that the people that I spoke with are very passionate about this, and the people who have voted for this have really seriously considered this and considered the cost, which is not appealing to anyone, but they know that it needs to be done, the cost will just continue to go up, and we need to have it done now. The majority spoke, the rules were followed, the regulations were followed, information was available from the road commission, from the village, and it was out there if you had any questions. I feel that it was a very open process, and I think that the majority have spoken, and their votes deserve to be considered. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ruffner.
Hello. My name is Matthew Damon. I live at 128 Hamilton, and would like to record this as my objection towards the tax tribunal. I don't have a whole lot of comments, other than, you know, the cost to me is, it's ridiculous. We have three kids. I'm looking at what would equate to a 40% increase to my property taxes. Seems that, you know, 52% of people voting, if we're going to have a SAD that is so burdensome to somebody, I mean, a 5% or 10% increase to taxes is one thing. You're increasing my property taxes by 40%, and we're going to slip that through at just over 50% of the vote, which there's been enough evidence to show there should at least be some extra question given to those votes and what really counts. The roads have been around, we've seen slide presentations for, you know, 60-plus years. We all get to work every day, the kids get to school, the village life functions. One extra year is not going to, it's not like people's basements are backing up with raw sewage right now. Like, a year, two years, is not going to end the world. I think there's enough question to just pause this. You know, I'd love to see, like, how hard were these bids beaten up? You know, I mean, it's just, you know these folks are making a killing off this project. And I would love to know, like, who negotiated these bids? How hard did they push? How much did they get knocked off from the original quote? I don't think anybody here would go spend this amount of money and just take the first bid, you know, take a couple bids and just write the check. So I would just ask for a pause. I think there's been more than enough information, even in the town hall presented, that it seems like, with all this question and the burden you're putting on all of us, take a pause. I mean, if you're so confident in this, as the woman who spoke before me said, everybody got all the information, it's all transparent, vote again. Vote again. Give it another year. You get 60% of the vote, we're all wrong. I just have a feeling if you voted again with all this information out there, it wouldn't be 52% you're talking about. It's going to be a lot lower. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Damon.
Hi, my name is Matt Gatewood. I live at 133 North Cranbrook Cross Road with my wife Jennifer. Thank you for taking the time tonight. Appreciate you listening to our concerns. I'm here to voice my objection to the special assessment district number 428, currently under your consideration. I object to the amount of the special assessment and many elements contained within the SAD, including the project scope, the bid process, the project cost, and the administration of the SAD petition. In particular, I'd like to address the petition process used by the Village Association and Bloomfield Township to advance this project. According to data obtained from the township through a Freedom of Information Act request, 78 of the 150 homes in the gold section, or 52%, were marked as having signed the petition for creating the special assessment district in a manner sufficient to be identified as a signed unit of benefit. Within the 20 sets of official petition documents obtained, 63 parcel numbers had signatures from two homeowners, presumably husband and wife. 17 parcel numbers had signature of only one individual. In order to meet the required 51% support of the petition, the Bloomfield Village Association and the township have treated 15 of those single signatures as being sufficient to satisfy the requirement outlined in the SAD petition process provided by the Village Association. This process requires the signature of both spouses, regardless of whether both are listed on the title. According to the township's owner and taxpayer records, five of the 15 single signatures belong to legitimate single-owner parcels. Of the remaining 10 single-signature homes, five contained a single signature of a person not listed as the property owner or a single signature from only one owner of a two-person home, or a two-owner home. The remaining five single signatures may or may not be from homeowners who actually own the home outright. Township records do not indicate marital status, we have no way of knowing that. This means only 68 of the parcels identified on the petition documents contain valid signatures in support of the SAD. This is only 45.33%. Even if the five remaining single signatures included, in the total, the support rises only to 73 homeowners, or 48.67%. Situation is similar in yellow. The data serves as evidence the Bloomfield Township SAD petition process was not followed by the Bloomfield Village Association, and the required level of support has not been received in gold nor yellow in order to move the special assessment districts forward. I respectfully ask the Township Board of Trustees to reject authorizing special assessment district 428 and 429 for construction bidding.
Good evening. My name is Tim O'Hara. I live at 1363 Aberdovee, which is in yellow, and I object to the gold SAD, and I'll be back to object to the yellow SAD. But I just want to say that I was a trustee from 2014 to 2017 in Bloomfield Village, and I'd like to take you back to 2015, which is what started the process that got us here today. There was a Bloomfield Village Road Improvement Committee that was formed, and I was a member, and the previous initiative failed in 2013, not 2015. The objective was to investigate all options and to be transparent with the residents moving forward, as this had been an issue on past initiatives. Three roads were to be excluded: Covington, Cranbrook, and part of Glengarry. The Road Improvement Committee made a presentation to the village board in October 2015, and we told them what we had done and what we wanted to do. And we wanted to do a mailing to the residents that consisted of a letter explaining who we were, what we were doing, why we were doing it, frequently asked questions, and then an expression of interest form that was required by the RCOC. The board approved $1,000 for us to do that mailing. In our letter, we told the residents that the RCOC would provide a comprehensive study free of charge on the condition of the roads and an accurate estimate for improving the roads. To achieve this, they required 51% of the residents on every street to sign and submit an expression of interest form. When the study was complete, any and all financial options would be presented to the residents. This was to take two years for the ROC to complete this study. The forms were submitted on March 2016 to the RCOC. So how was the plan executed from 2015, 2016 to today? The cost. RCOC split the village into five sections. No input from the residents on those five sections. RCOC decided which houses are included in each section. Big issue on corner houses, no input from village residents, even though this has a huge impact on cost. You know, was it done to isolate the opposition and prevent residents from joining forces to oppose this, like happened in 2013? I don't know. Could be. Timing. Two years to complete. November 2022, six years and seven months later, the pink section SAD was released. March 23, seven years later, the blue section was released. August, eight years, five months, the gold section was released. Then sometime 2025, nine years, five months, green will be released. And honestly, I feel sorry for the people in green, because the last pig to the trough is going to get the short end of the stick financially, because so many homes have been assigned to different sections. So I'll be back.
Thank you, Tim.
Good evening. Greg Kraus, again, from 1375 Aberdovee Place in Bloomfield Village. I am in the yellow section, but I'll go ahead and put my comments here in the gold and can return to just refer back to these at the appropriate time. So first, I'd like to thank all of you for the opportunity to address the board this evening. You know, as elected officials, we're counting on you all to, you know, ensure tax fairness, maintain affordable housing, and to, you know, minimize the costs associated with constituent-funded projects. And it's my sincere hope that tonight's vote is just not merely a fait accompli, that you will seriously consider the well-founded objections of your constituents. Moreover, I ask, as you deliberate this evening, that you reject the village board's proposition that the only way forward is theirs, and that their way must be taken without any delay or any amendment. You know, the plan, as it's currently proposed, calls for a complete teardown and rebuilding of each and every single road in, actually in the village, but certainly in our yellow division, which may be very convenient for the board, but it's objectively unnecessary. I simply drive down my street, Aberdovee Place, and you'll see it's perfectly passable without any problem. Any plan for which residents are assessed should be, you know, predicated on the least amount of work and cost for the maximum benefit, and the roads just aren't falling apart, every single one of them. There have been some selective pictures up there that look pretty nasty, maybe some places really do need full rebuilds, but I think that, I invite all of you, before you vote, to drive around and see that there are areas that could just be repaired and significantly reduce costs. With that in mind, also, to achieve the most effective cost outcome, the township should reject the current proposed SAD as necessary to allow time for the board and the residents to develop a consensus plan, taking into account the lessons learned, as one of our previous residents suggested. You know, we've learned a lot of lessons, probably from the prior phases. They've had, you know, things go right, things go wrong. I've heard stories about flooding problems. There was somebody raised at a recent village board meeting that one of the bids contained $1.2 million for traffic control. Can you imagine that in the village? Anybody want $1.2 million for traffic control? Because I'll do that. You know, let's do this right. We don't have to do this fast. Speed is not our friend here. And finally, if you approve this SAD as proposed, you will be voting in favor of massive property assessment that's frankly regressive. In its current form, each property owner is assessed the same, regardless of their street frontage, their lot size, their house size, their house value. In my section, yellow, you know, my neighbor who has approximately 67 feet of frontage is going to pay the same amount as another home in yellow, and get this, has 750 feet of street frontage. I mean, that's ridiculous. The homes of families in the more modest sections, and yellow consists of many more modest homes, and that's where I live, in those streets off of, usually come off of Sandringham, very nice, but much more modest than the estate homes in Glengarry, are now going to be asked to subsidize those gigantic, you know, estate-sized homes that people are fortunate enough to live in, but that's just not the way we tax people here. You know, people who thought that they had bought into the village, maybe when interest rates were low, that had families, like the gentleman who spoke earlier, you know, they thought they had a nice, affordable housing option, they had a really good break, and now, all of a sudden, along comes this special assessment that no one could have planned for, no one could have expected, and they're being asked to pay $55,000 upfront. While most people can't do that, they're going to be asked to cut a check in my section for $75,000 over 15 years. So people are going to have to make tough decisions, maybe. Not everybody can just reach into their pocket and cut a massive check. Somebody might not be able to go, you know, play sports on a travel team, or, you know, go to camp, or take a vacation, or renovate their kitchen. These are major decisions that nobody was planning on. So, you know, because this is an assessment, also, I think it's important, and it hasn't been stressed, I think it's important to stress for the board and also for the people here, because this is a special assessment and not a tax, none of this will be tax-deductible. So even if the SALT caps are removed, all of this is coming out of earned income. So to pay a special assessment of $55,000, you're going to probably have to earn income of somewhere around $90,000 to $100,000 extra dollars a year, in a year, to cover those costs. So it's not just a $55,000 problem we're talking about. And finally, the village board has tried to reassure all of us that the current property owners can just simply transfer the assessment burden, debt, you know, to the next owner. Well, we all know that's not going to solve anything. Anybody here who's buying the property and sees a massive tax assessment is going to either say, "Lower the price," or pay the assessment off. So you can't just pass it off. So I thank you all very much for your time and your consideration this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus.
Hello. My name is James McCracken. I live at 365 Hamilton. I'm with my wife Sarah. We feel the cost of $50,000 over the cost of 15 years is a tremendous undue burden that should not be placed on individual homeowners. Just one example that I'm sure many people here can relate to is we have children that we would like to help pay their way through college. The average cost of tuition in the state of Michigan is about $15,000. That does not include tuition, excuse me, does not include room, or board, or books. That pushes a one-year cost of college to at least $30,000. Amongst other things, the potential passage of SAD 428 would undoubtedly prohibit us from helping send our three kids to college. This is just one example of how it would impact our family financially, obviously probably relatable to a lot of people. That is why I would like to formally and respectfully object to the special assessment district number 428 to the tax tribunal. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. McCracken.
Thank you. I'm going to jump in during his 1 minute and 53 seconds. Hi, I'm Sarah McCracken. I'm a lifer in the village. I grew up here, and my parents still live in the village. They're on Williamsbury. They are elderly and are unable to make it. They're at 401 North Williamsbury. My two twin boys are eight years old, so college is certainly a way off. However, 100% on the horizon, if anyone here, I see many familiar faces, we are already college-planning. It is definitely, certainly, on the horizon. And, I mean, this added, let's just call it $3,000, to our already high tax payment will definitely price us and other villagers out of the area. If you want to increase diversity in our neighborhood, which clearly it's not the most diverse, but you want to have your children live in a great area, we're blessed, we're so lucky, we love the area, lived there, grew up there, also, lack of transparency. Where am I finding out this information? Is it on the blog? Is it on the village website? Is it on the Bloomfield Township website? It has been incredibly disappointing to not have any lack of transparency. So adding $3,000 on top of our nearly $20,000, maybe even more than $20,000 tax bill, will rob my children of any vacation, any summer camp, and, yes, their college, so they can be baggers at Kroger.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Weagle. I'm at 435 North Glengarry with my wife Stephanie, four children. This is the gold zone. It's SAD 428. I'm here today to first publicly voice my protest to the special assessment district. I'd like to give a few particular reasons why I oppose this. Number one was the signature validation process that Matt eloquently spoke to. I don't have anything to add to that, other than I was a part of the team that FOIA'd the signature sheets and can verify or testify as well that there are single-signature homes on there of married couples. Two signatures are required of those homes, and they were not achieved, and it is less than 51% if you do the total count. The second point is the SAD benefit. We had discussion of this on Friday in the town hall meeting. Thank you for hosting that with concerned residents. There's certainly no evidence that this $50,000 cost, or even $68,000 with interest, will provide a measurable benefit to the home. Certainly, the road will be improved, but an increase of the value of the home is questionable. Dirk said on Friday, there's a targeted benefit of 2.6. So in other words, 50,000 divided by 2.6 is roughly a $19,000 targeted increase in value of the home. It does not have to be dollar-for-dollar, but targeting that. That's just not going to happen. We actually got input this afternoon from a well-known, well-established real estate agent in our area, and he said, based on the exorbitant cost of this, the home is not going to increase in value, the home value will actually go down because of this high cost. The final point is about the bid process. So for my professional career, 30 years, public and private procurement, so I would say that I'm a subject matter expert in procurement. that I'm a subject matter expert in procurement. The cost is exorbitant. There's no benchmarking that takes place between the bid, the bids from the contractors versus other municipalities in the state as a check and balance. Again, I worked in public procurement as well, which is how the RCOC conducts their bidding process, so I'm very familiar with it. There's no negotiation that went on. You can negotiate public contracts, but there was none of the sort. The estimates that are created for the homes actually come from, basically, awarded contracts get input into the model at the RCOC. That's what's used to generate the estimates for the village. Now, the tough part and the difficult part to accept is that estimate is now published, and guess who the estimate gets in the hands of? The contractors. So the contractors know in and around where to bid in order to win the contract and not have to come back to the township to get approval, because it's above and beyond, it's either 5% or 10%. So I ask that you please pause this process, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jeff.
Good evening. My name is Liz Lukinbach. I am a village resident at 320 Hamilton. I'm in the Gold Section, and I'm probably one of the few voices that are here before you this evening to voice my support for the Special Assessment District. I've heard a lot of comments about a couple different things, a lack of transparency, and I want to address that first. I think that that is the farthest thing from what we've experienced. We have had regular communication from the village. The village board meetings are open to residents to attend, to ask questions. Kathy Westernborn, our village manager, is an open door. She'll answer your phone calls, she'll respond to an email. Any questions that any resident has had about this process could have been answered or addressed. There have been a lot of comments about it's being rushed, it's too fast. Let's pause. There was a proposal to fix the roads in 2013, and the cost was about $18,000 per house. Kicking the can down the road for 11, now 12 years, has cost the village residents dearly. So pausing is only likely to increase the cost of what is inevitable. Our roads are 60 years old. Infrastructure. Every community has to invest in infrastructure, and that's what good community citizens do. And it's time. And again, kicking the can down the road is only going to cost us more money. There are certainly parts of the village where the roads are not quite as bad as others, but I can assure you that families with small children don't necessarily have the luxury of picking which road they live on. We have kids on bikes, we have kids on motor scooters. I don't know anybody who lives in a family or in a neighborhood with families sees that one of the hottest toys for kids are these motorized scooters. They ride them down the middle of the roads. Most of the kids are doubled up, and they're not wearing helmets. Potholes at every single opportunity poses a danger for those kids. So I would ask you to approve the request that's been made for the Gold Section. Again, yes, it's expensive, but it is infrastructure that's worth paying for, and it will benefit the residents of the village in the long term. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Liz.
My name is Igor Latinsky. I'm at 1365 Indian Mount. I'm going to, probably, I'm here to object to establishment of SAD. Probably going to repeat many things that have been said. I think we, most of us do understand that the costs are extremely material, but even more important, there was no benchmark provided. From my experience, and just talking for the past few days with a few colleagues, and we are heavily involved in various industrial projects, the cost is outrageous. There is zero evidence of a road commission trying to optimize that cost. My opinion, the roads are not too bad, but even if they are, there's certain things we can afford and certain things we can't. I think this one is outrageous. Somebody already said that, but I'm facing the same decision. I got two kids to go to college. Now I'm going to get to pick one favorite one. That one goes, the other one is going to pay for the road. That's really the magnitude of a decision. So will you help me with that? The other thing is, and again, going from expertise in the private business, the bidding process was not done correctly. Considering the magnitude of that project, to me, the road commission was the wrong entity to do the bidding to begin with. They have a vested interest. Essentially, they fixed the roads that they owe it should be fixing, but they get to fix it now for somebody else's money. What incentive do they have to optimize my cost? At the end of the day, many of us would not make, mind to make an investment, but again, zero evidence provided that this investment will increase my market value of my house. A phone call, a short phone call to my real estate agents, the same one who sold me the house and has been doing business in this area for over 30 years, he laughed at me. He said, you're just going to have to reduce the price for your house with the amount of assessment. People do not buy houses with expectation of no road. They buy a house with expectation of the road, right? How good the road is, if it's passable, it's good enough. So I think we need to pause it, we need to analyze the cost, we need to present the cost and optimization efforts to, to the rest of the residents and let them decide, knowing all the facts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Michaela White. My husband and I, Drew White, live at 182 North Glengarry. To be honest, I was not going to speak today. We're kind of more bystanders, and this really isn't something I love to be part of. We moved into the village about two years ago. Took us two years to find our house. Of course, by that point, interest rates just continued to skyrocket, so now we're kind of inheriting what sounds to be a pretty lengthy debate in the village over the course of several years. So I just think I wanted to come, make sure our voice is heard, that we do object to the SAD 428. Definitely not a cost that we are anticipating, especially with having our first child on the way. I think also, the voting process, to me, when I think of transparency, that's what I think of, just not being able to vote, no. Volunteers going door-to-door, it just seems very political in nature, and to be honest, it's just not something we signed up for when looking to move into the village. I think as, you know, we hope to get younger families in, this obviously is going to be a big, I mean, a lot of our friends are looking at the village, and with all this going on, they've decided to look elsewhere. And so I think when you think about real estate and our home values, this is definitely going to affect the type of people that the village was trying to attract, and so, you know, we hope that we can maintain and stay in our house, but really hoping that this doesn't go through, or at least there's a pause. So want to make sure our voice is heard. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Pat Parks, 164 North Glengarry. I'm here with my husband, and I'm not good at speaking, so I'm just going to read an email that I wrote to Mike yesterday. So hopefully, this will introduce some new evidence or some new things that I would like to be brought to the record. Dear Mike, my husband and I attended the Bloomfield Township meeting regarding the Bloomfield Village Roads Project on January 10, 2025. As I was preparing to write you an email regarding this meeting, I reviewed the correspondence received from the president of Bloomfield Village and another letter from Bloomfield Township in the past. So instead of listing a number of concerns I had regarding this project, I thought it would be insightful to send the correspondence to you before the validation of the petitions for the Gold Section on Monday, January 13, 2025, for you to review. I will give you copies of both of these letters at the meeting tonight and hope you will respond. On August 12, 2024, the residents of Bloomfield Village received a signed letter from Kristen Sewell, the president of Bloomfield Village Association, with the following, and I quote, "Because the petitions are legal documents governed by Public Act 188 and other legal requirements, there are some technicalities to keep in mind. If a homeowner is married, both spouses must sign the petition, regardless of whether both are listed on the title. It would help us greatly if both spouses can sign at the same time. This was clearly not the case if you review the petitions with single signatures." The other correspondence the residents of Bloomfield Village received from Bloomfield Township on August 8, 2024, and signed by Jennifer Worthman, Deputy Assessor, Assessing Department, which read, "Once the official petition is submitted to the township, the township's assessor and attorney will review and certify the petition. This certification process may take about two to three months. Can the Bloomfield Township attorney verify that he certified the petitions as well as the township assessor and found the petitions with only one signature to not be from a married couple, despite whether both were listed on the title? Also, was the two-to-three-month timetable followed in order to certify the process? I hope you take both of these documents in mind before you certify the petitions at the meeting on January 13, 2025. Thanking you for your review. Sincerely, Pat Parks."
Thank you, Mrs. Parks.
Oh, and it also, I'm sorry, Mike's response to me was, hi Patty, I have copied Derek Burkleggs to respond to your questions regarding the laws we follow on signature and petitions. Thank you for your email, Mike. And as of yet, I have not yet received a response from the township attorney, Dirk Burkleggs, regarding this. So I can't respond to what he would tell me.
Patty, he'll get back to you. His mother just passed away, so there'll be just a little delay. I apologize.
Okay.
But just so you know.
Okay, but I wanted to give you both documents of the letters that was received from Kristen and, and from your township.
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Mindy.
Hi there. Hi, some of you know me. I'm Mindy Richards at 220 Glengarry. This also serves as my official protest. I think, Martin, I sent you a note, so we should be good with that. Really what you're hearing in there, there are more people that want to speak, and I think Kristen's here from the board, so she'll give you her perspective, but from the HOA Board. But you're hearing a litany of confusion, some complaints, and it really boils down to something that we, as a majority of residents in the village, asked for transparent communication in September. If we had been able to achieve that, contrary to other residents' comments, we might not find ourselves where we are today. But today, we are here. So we're here to implore you to think long and hard about the information some of you have. There's more to come. We referenced some of that, thank you, Mike, for Friday night. But we've really done a fact-based analysis to see how we've ended up where we are, and the numbers don't foot, as they would say. The spreadsheet doesn't work. The FOIA'd information doesn't track to achieve over 50%. And more than that, I would say to you, during this process, we had many residents come forward who were so intimidated by the process, and I think Kathy's aware of this, Jennifer's heard about this. I mean, in writing, I have impassioned emails. May I please remove my name? I didn't know what I was signing up for. You heard from someone in person say this to those of you that were here the other evening. I wish I could think back to what I didn't know then. You heard Clay Phillips, who started with this whole evening, about 4:28, talk to you about a request for transparency. We didn't all get together before this meeting and determine what we were all going to share. So you see, there's a mind share that goes on with the people in this room that are hoping for a better process. Not poor roads, we'd like enhanced roads, but there's a way to do it to build trust, to move forward. And the elephant in the living room no one has mentioned is our very challenged water system. God forbid, we spend all this money on roads, and we have to go back to sewer and water. You're going to have residents very distressed if they're spending tens of thousands of dollars and the water system doesn't support the community. So our impassioned plea is that you think long and hard about what we're doing, and let's try to get this right as a community, and let's try to bring everyone together to do it right. That's really the request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mindy.
Good evening. My name's Robert Lane. I live at 168 North Cranbrook Cross Road. I've been a resident of the village for 18 and a half years and can freely admit that the roads are horrible. There's no curbs, and some of the roads are comically bad. Like, how they are allowed to exist like this is beyond control. I don't drive an SUV, and maybe that's part of it. Some of the people I drive around, I'm a minority in that case. To me, I object because the cost is outrageous. I can understand the need for this, but the, I want world peace, but I'm not willing to spend a million dollars on it. So I don't understand how we've got to this point. I do and I don't, in a lot of ways. The one note of caution, Jennifer, I believe you raised, I don't know what impact the month delay has on the overall construction plan for next year, if that pushes us into '26 anyway, or for this year, I'm sorry. I don't know what that does. The other piece I'd like to note is, and as Matt and a couple of my other neighbors up the, up the way can attest to, North Cranbrook Cross is a speedway. It's a cut-through from Cranbrook to get onto Maple if you're going west. People speed like hell all over those potholes as it is, and there is no plan in place that I have heard of or understood in order how to combat that, whether that's speed humps or something along those lines. I know that's an out-of-left-field kind of topic. I just, you know, we were talking, or someone raised the point about kids riding double saddle on scooters. A, that shouldn't be happening, but that, the justification of having someone already down our road drive 40-plus miles an hour and on really, really poor surface, what that's going to become in the future is a concern. So please take this as my objection. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Kristen Sewell. I live at 3335 Burning Bush Road. My name was just mentioned, so I guess I am talking as both the village president, but the resident, a resident. When my husband and I moved into the neighborhood in 2012, and we were in favor of the petition then, and we signed it, and unfortunately, the SAD failed in 2013. And so this is my second term as president and on the board, and I have been very interested and passionate about improving the infrastructure of the neighborhood and the roads, especially after it failed in 2013. I, I think that I would greatly appreciate your consideration of the majority of the residents that have signed in favor of the petition. We, at the village, we emphasize the importance of harmony, and to have part of the village roads complete and part of the village roads incomplete, especially when the majority of residents are in favor of the SAD, would be a great disappointment, I think, for a lot of the neighbors that are passionate about the roads and the improvement. Nobody likes the price, and the process has been very arduous. We, as the village and the, the road committee, have followed the process, have worked within the limitations of living in the township and also with the road commission, and so I understand that a lot of our residents are really displeased, but if, unfortunately, this is the position we're in, and we've come so far to this point, and I would like for, to request your approval for this to continue to go through as the majority of the residents have spoken. With respect to some of the comments about transparency, it's one of those, it's one of those things where you're never going to be transparent enough. We've had 10 years of annual meetings. We've had multiple small group meetings. Kathy is very accessible at all times to answer questions. We've had plenty of opportunities for residents to ask questions and get the answers needed, and it's a very difficult process to explain and answer, and if you, you know, don't like the information that you've been given, then it's something, you know, you're going to keep looking for something else. So I thank you for your time tonight and appreciate your consideration to move forward.
Thank you, Mrs. Sewell. Thank you.
My name is Sean Metros. I live on Glengarry Circle, which is in the blue section, which is one of the sections that's already complete. which is one of the sections that's already complete. I've worked with the Road Committee and then became the, quote, "chairman" of the Road Committee. So like to mention, I think we started this process over a decade ago, which is, which is kind of crazy when you think about it, but obviously, we had COVID in between. It just goes to show you that the inflationary pressures that we've witnessed are kind of unprecedented, and history shows these costs kind of go in one direction, right? So we had the proposal years ago to get it done, and it was a lot cheaper, and here we are, and now it's $50,000. So it's, I know it's a burden. I've spoken to probably 60% of the residents in the village, and the feedback has been unanimous that the roads need to be done. We were fortunate to get the two first sections done. I thought the construction process went amazingly well. I had six, you know, trucks in front of my house for six months, and it was livable, and the communication was great, and the roads are amazing. So the feedback that I've gotten from residents is extremely positive. Obviously, there's a vocal minority that is against the roads, and I can understand the cost is a big burden for some. But we're 60 years into the life of these roads. The condition is horrendous. Safety is an issue, and at some point, the Road Commission is probably going to force us to redo the roads. So my view is, we've gotten over 52% of the vote. From a transparency standpoint, I can't tell you how disappointed I am to hear that, because we made every single effort to inform residents of town hall meetings, meetings with the Road Commission, sending out flyers, writing a blog, Kathy, obviously, taking phone calls and meetings at all times of the day. So I'd say we need to move this forward. It's way past due, and I'm excited about getting the next two sections done, and then hopefully completing the fifth section in year three in 2026. So, thank you. I appreciate everyone being here, and hopefully we can move this thing forward.
Thank you, Sean.
Hi, I'm Michelle Castner. I am treasurer of the village board and not a very popular person right now. But I think I can speak for the entire board when I say none of us have loved this process. None of us love the cost, but it is what it is. We're not here to vote on the public acts that support the SAD or the petition process at all. We're here to vote on this one particular SAD. We followed the rules, as Kristen said. We worked within our limitations. We did what we were supposed to do. We've gotten this far. It's been nearly a decade to get here. And like I said, we didn't love doing it, but we did it, and we got here, and the majority has spoken. And I just want you to support that. I realize a lot of these comments are comments against the process itself, and we're not here to vote on the process. We're here to vote on this particular SAD and the one to follow. So, thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Hi, my name is Robert Levine. I'm a resident at 3135 Morningview Terrace. I was a canvasser for the petitions earlier this year. I also canvassed for the expressions of interest several years ago. I sat on the village board for a while, and I was on the Road Committee. And I mention that because I, while I certainly hear and respect everybody's concerns about cost, it is a significant cost, I would like to address the concerns about transparency. I got involved with the Road Committee in 2015 upon reading an article from our then-village manager, Art Atkinson, soliciting input and volunteers for the Road Committee at that time. This is shortly after the most, the previous road project had failed. It was at that time that I got involved, and I've, as people have said, it has been 10 years of organizations being formed within the village to try to gather support of information being shared with residents, of information being shared at annual meetings through the newsletters, Art and now Kathy making themselves available for questions and for assistance. So through my experience being involved with this process in many different facets, and more recently, as a canvasser for the petitions earlier this, or last year, I should say, I found that there was an extensive amount of information available, and for those who wanted to seek it out, it was there, and they could find what they needed to learn. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Matthew Mariana. I'm on Williamsbury, 345 North Williamsbury. Section 428, it's about the SAD, and I'm here to express my support of this initiative. I was a canvasser back in 2015. Cost on the roads was $22,000 at that time. We got close. We couldn't get it done. All right? In the last 10 years, the roads have deteriorated further. The conditions of the roads was reviewed by the RCOC, and they came up with the opinion that the roads are no longer repairable. They have to be torn down, new base, new blacktop, new curbs. Otherwise, it's a waste of money. So this isn't the Board of Trustees in Bloomfield Village. This isn't Kathy's opinion. This is the RCOC. A thing about Kathy, our village manager, as far as transparency goes, we've had large group meetings, we've had small group meetings, we've had individual meetings. We've asked, people can ask all the questions. And what's happened here is the majority of the people have voted in favor of replacing the roads. Now, I know it's a close majority, but it's still a majority. Any more delay now is just going to be, the condition's going to get worse. The repair cost is probably going to go up, all right? And I think as far as transparency and accessibility, Kathy has done a tremendous job. The Board of Trustees in Bloomfield Village has bent over backwards to be accessible to the residents for questions, support, and nobody wants to spend $50,000. Nobody, everybody wants new roads, but nobody wants to spend the money. I think it's time. I think it would be an enhancement to the village, and it's long overdue. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Matthew.
Good evening. My name's Dave Dilly. I'm at 965 East Glengarry Circle. I'm actually in the yellow section. I do have many friends in the village that are for and against this, many that I will be friends with whether they agree with me or not, and I guess unless they don't want to talk to me. But, so I'm in support of them being repaired. Our roads stink. I mean, every time I have friends come over, they're like, "Your roads stink. Why do your roads stink?" I mean, they're bad. As many have said, they're 60 years old. They do need a complete rebuild. I have a section just down from my house, 100 feet was redone two summers ago. They took a layer off, put a layer on. Half of it's already cracked up. So if we decided to just go, "Let's do that in those few sections," I would be more pissed if I spent $15,000 and recapped it and then it tore apart in three years than I would be to spend and then have to redo that again. I will say, the transparency, at least for myself, anytime I went to the village, asked a question, I went to the one of the meetings, and they were very helpful, answered a lot of the questions I had, because I was not 100% in support when I originally started. We've been in the village for five years. We heard about the roads at that time, because we asked, "Why do the roads stink?" And they told us right away. One thing that has not been brought up tonight is I know when we moved to the village, many people said, "Our taxes in the village are so much better than Birmingham." One of those reasons is Birmingham has city taxes that go for their roads. I know friends that are in Birmingham that had their roads redone, their sidewalks redone. They paid their, you know, two mils or whatever they pay. I don't know the exact number, but there are mills that they pay that we don't pay, and they got an assessment for $10,000, and they didn't even have a question. Like, they didn't get to come to a meeting. They didn't get anything. They just said, "Here's your bill for $10,000." They paid it. And then every year, they keep paying their $2,000, $3,000, $4,000 in taxes. Clearly, we are different because we own our own roads, so this is a tax, but hopefully, it's a 15-year burden, not 50 years if we lived in a city, which, again, I used, I came from another city before this. I understand why people object. It's a lot of money. I totally understand why they object. I think you have 50-plus percent of the community that wants the roads redone. If they don't pass, I highly recommend that whoever did not agree tonight, that they put a committee together. They come up with all the ways we can do it less expensive. We can make the roads really, you know, done properly, less expensive. I'm all for it. We clearly have people that are subject matter experts in certain areas, spend their time, and come help the whole community, because clearly, there's a lot of us that just want the road done. So my final thoughts are that the roads need repaired. So if they're not going to be repaired now, when are they going to be repaired? And there also will always be a liability.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Terry.
Good evening. I'm Terry Donley. I live at 368 North Williamsbury in the gold section. I got the right color. I am colorblind, by the way, so. My wife and I moved into our house in December of 1981, and the roads weren't very good at that time, and they've just continued to deteriorate since then. I fully support this project going forward. I'm very sympathetic to those who are complaining about the cost. That's understandable. It's about, almost three times what it would have been had we been able to proceed in 2013. But we don't, as a charter township, we don't own the roads. The Road Commission does. And so therefore, therefore, they determine how we're going to proceed with this. And the township has been very consistent over the years in approaching the Road Commission. Once you get the appropriate number of signatures on a petition, to get their consent to move forward, you enter into a contract with them. And then, once they take bids, and I think everybody ought to understand this, this five, the $7 million number, whatever it is, is merely an estimate. And you really won't know the cost of this thing until bids are actually taken sometime as soon as possible. And that's the problem. If we don't get up in the front of the line to get our project bid, prices are only going to go up because everybody's plate's going to be filled. And so I would encourage you, ask you to support moving forward, mindful of all the legitimate concerns we've heard from the other speakers here, and hopefully, we can get this done. Everybody I've spoken to in the two sections that were done this year are very pleased, number one, with the workmanship of the contractors, the way they treated the homeowners. And we drove over, one of the, we drove over coming up Bradway, and then we turned onto one of the roads that was paved until we got to Loser, and believe me, it was much nicer. Our road right now is a disaster. We can't ride our bikes on it. There are big potholes, and I wouldn't want any child anywhere near that place. So it's, it's a public safety hazard in a lot of areas in the village, and I encourage you to approve this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Terry.
Hi. My name is Jerry Stay. I am with my wife at 220 North Cranbrook Cross. She spoke earlier. She'll take up about a minute and a half, so I'm not going to take up a full three minutes. I'll just take up the rest of her time. What I wanted to address is the fact that people are mentioning that it was $18,000 the cost back in 2013, I think it was, that was thrown around, right? Adjusted for inflation today, that would be about $24,000, $25,000, okay? I'm not a math wizard, all right, but I can tell you, to say that's $50,000 now, it doesn't make any sense. And I don't understand why people supporting the project can actually say, "That's a great deal. Let's go for it," right, without asking any questions. Doesn't seem like there was any negotiation that happened. There's no evidence of that. So it's hard to support this project. My opinion, there should be more due diligence that had, should have been done on this project that didn't get done. And then I'll address the one thing that says, there's a lot of transparency here, and questions were being answered. That is simply not true. My wife and I sent several emails to Kathy looking for responses, and we just got shut out. And I can tell you, the rest of the homeowners that were not in support of this, were getting the same kind of treatment. So that is simply not a true statement. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jerry.
Hi. My name is Robin Metz. I live at 1010 North Glengarry Road, and I am in the yellow section. The talk of transparency, I wanted to know if we were so transparent, why did we have to get a FOIA request to look at the petition? Why not just give it to us? Then that's how we found out. A lot of people were just one signature, not the couple. And when we told you about that on Friday, you said, "Well, we didn't know." So if we don't tell you, and we don't get the information from the FOIA request, which we had to get a lawyer to do, then how is that transparent? We did actually ask for a meeting with people. We sent certified letters to the board, and we didn't get a response, two of them. This is over a 200% increase, maybe 300% increase from 2013. And I also want to know, any of you, do any of you live in the village? Do any of you live in the village?
I do not.
What's that?
I do not.
Do, do you live in the village?
If I did, I would have told you.
Okay. So, so you not answering, is that an answer as, "No, I don't live in the village"?
Well, this is rarely, this is public comment. We can answer when we close.
Because you're voting on us who live in the village. Okay, so I'd like some information on that. Also, okay, so now I want some clarity, apparently, and because there's rumors going around. We kind of need to know if it's true or not, that 5% of the project goes back to the township. The money goes back to the township. That's $3.75 million. Is that true, that it goes back to the township? And if it does, what is it used for? Will we get an itemized audit of where that money goes, and will that money maybe come and help repair roads going forward, or what? But I think that money, we need to know what it's for, where it's going to, what hands, because it's our money. And by the way, I'm opposed to this.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments? Oh, Kathy, okay.
I'll try not to speak really long. Thank you all for, for listening tonight.
Just introduce yourself and your address.
Oh, Kathy Weisenborn. I am the manager in Bloomfield Village. I also am a resident of the gold section on Hamilton. Tonight, the board is voting on whether to accept the request of the majority of the gold section residents to fix our roads. There have been a lot of discussion tonight about transparency. I just want to talk about a few of the things that we've done for communication. I've talked about this previously, so those that are recurring trustees, bear with me. We've held more than 25 small group meetings, so that residents can come in and have, in a small setting, we do a short presentation, and then we have discussion. They get all their questions answered. Those are designed to be an hour. Some of those have gone almost two. So we've been very open to answering questions in those meetings. We also established a website, villageroads.org, that has extensive detail about the SAD process, the history of our roads, and I keep that updated frequently to share additional information, answer questions that have come up. This is all in addition to our quarterly bulletins, annual meetings, et cetera, et cetera. Some of the residents asked for a town hall meeting with the village board. We held that meeting in November and had about an hour-long Q and A session with those residents. In the end, we did turn in petitions that have 52% of support. I'd like to address the question about the signatures. We were well aware of the requirement that if there was a married couple in the house, both need to sign, and we did get that where it was required. There are two instances in the petition where there is only one signature of a couple. That was a house divided, and those did not count. There are other signatures, situations where there's a signature, single signature on the petition, because there is a widow, widow in the house, widower, someone that's single or divorced. And in those cases, there's only one person to sign. I'm very comfortable that we turned in 52% in compliance with your requirements. To be very candid, nobody's excited about the cost here, but the cost is not likely to go down anytime soon. Some of those speaking tonight Some of those speaking tonight have asked you to delay the process. The reality is, a delay has no real purpose, other than to allow a small but vocal minority to veto what the majority of the residents have asked for in the Gold section. So, the simple question for you tonight is, will you support the majority of residents who want to fix our roads in the Gold section? And I hope that you will all vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Okay, any more public comments on SAD number 428? If not, we will close the public hearing and open up for comments from the board.
Before we do that, there's some of the questions that can be responded to, and I know Mark. Mark, can you respond to the whole issue of signatures?
Are we, are we done with the public comment? Because typically, okay. With regard to the signatures...
Do you want to do the second public hearing? Is that what you're asking?
No, were we done with 428?
He closed.
It is closed? Okay, it's closed. I'm sorry. So, for signatures generally, for married couple, Michigan recognizes tenancy by entirety, so typically, both signatures are required. But there are other instances where there may be, you know, one name on the title, two people living in the home, where there's no tenancy by entirety, either because there's no marriage, or because in order to establish that, there needs to be a transfer of the property at the same time. So, if somebody buys a home and then gets married, there's no need for both people to be signing in that regard, because there's no tenancy by the entirities. That all being said, I think the last speaker has verified, and the township has verified, that all the signatures that were obtained and counted were accurately presented. There is explanations for some widowers, divorced couple, you know, that sort of thing. So, I don't believe that there's reason to question the signatures. I think they've been reviewed and verified. And as I understand it, it's followed the rules for the signatures.
Thank you.
Well, I guess, the comment I have is, you know, I have been in your shoes, and I was a petition carrier, and we've tried to do it again, but we can't seem to get ours passed, which is difficult. But in terms of the, everybody's, you know, the $50,000 is a huge amount of money, but the roads had curbs, and the curbs are beat underground. And as one person did accurately comment, if you did try and just put a layer, which the county will not allow, it will crumble in a few years, and the infrastructure really needs to be underneath. Now, the $50,000, there were many people that said that that is what you're going to pay. That is the estimate, and the county does an incredible job of estimating. And in my experience, very often, the estimates come in under budget, so that is not your final hard number. And the number that actually, on a competitive bid that comes in, is where, you know, the number will be set at that time. This is just an estimate. Like I said, the county is very, very good at that. We did an SAD a couple of years ago, and it came in noticeably under. We have no control over that. But I would think the sooner we bid, the better. Before the contractors get busy, if they're hungry, they're going to be more competitive, I would believe. So, I know it's a difficult situation, so I understand.
Chris? I have some questions for RCOC. Can we have somebody come up as a representative, please?
Mark's here.
Thank you, Mark. So, I know trustee Murray alluded to this, but just so that we can hear it from RCOC, who determines how we repair the roads? Is it you guys, or is it the residents?
So, the expression of interest forms are submitted by Bloomfield Township to the road commission. We go out and we assess the roads, what work needs to be done. Obviously, there's been numerous folks here speak of the curbs that exist there actually buried due to numerous overlays done by the township, et cetera, et cetera. So, what we do in a nutshell is, we go out, gather that data, we engage our testing department to go out and core holes in the road. We've had engineering, actually outside consultants also is part of the Bloomfield Village scope, because it is so large. And we take all that information in, and then figure out how to rehabilitate the roads. So, in a nutshell, the roads have outlived their life. They're not functional the way that they were designed, and we've designed accordingly to make those roads functional again.
So, again, it is RCOC, they use experts, outside experts, subjugment experts associated with roads, how you can make it the most efficient way to fix it, but again, using good tax dollars and being able to invest them appropriately, correct?
Correct.
And then...
And I will add to that, making sure that everything is functional the way that it is, so the drainage structures, et cetera, et cetera.
Again, what is a normal life of a road?
We design for 35- to 40-year life expectancy. Again, life expectancy is a gray area. It's probably a disputable terminology based on what our perspective is, is a road agency versus, you know, a resident, et cetera, et cetera. So, we're designing for 35 to 40 years. We're using the same materials that we would use on any of our primary roads. So, if we were to over rehabilitate Lasser Road, or Wing Lake Road, or Long Lake Road, et cetera, we're using the same materials on those projects as we are within the subdivision.
Okay. And it has been stated that these roads have been about 60 years old, and again, continue to have patching, to a point where they've actually patched over the curb and gutter. That's correct?
There's actually curb and gutter underneath the asphalt that's not exposed, correct?
So, we've gone 50% longer than a high estimate for RCOC on roads?
Depending on your...
You're the expert, I am not a road guy, so...
Yeah, right. Depending on your outlook of what life expectancy is, correct?
Okay. All right.
Well, Chris, if I can maybe help you with that, in a perspective, those roads were done 60 years ago. My subdivision roads were done in the late 80s, and at that time, the county gave us a 20, 15- to 20-year life of the roads. And at 30 years, they were really, really bad, but we were unable to get, we got 49%. So, we're basically at it again, having done it in 88. But then, the expectancy was shorter, so now, you know, things improve, unfortunately costs more. But to hear Mark say that it's now like a 35- 40-year, when they told us 20. So, we felt like, you know, we got it, you know, we got 30, so let's go, and people were, you know, we had a very hard time, we couldn't pass it.
I have no more questions for Mark. I think I just have a couple other statements, similar to what trustee Murray had said. And a couple of the residents specifically talked about how, if we have this estimate on the bid, that's where they think all the contractors are coming on the bid, where I believe in the South Bloomfield Highlands water assessment, we had a bid associated with that. I believe that number came in 20% to 30% lower, is that correct, Jen? So, it isn't, that's where the competitive bid process comes in. The estimates, which again, we're voting on an estimate, or unit of benefit based on an estimate, is based on RCOC of completed projects with similar scope, correct?
Correct.
And people that are subjugment experts associated with bids that were approved and gone forward. And that's how we came up with that estimate. So, again, with the competitive bid process, with, hopefully we have lots of bidders, hopefully that number could be driven down. But again, we have, we don't know what that number is until we get those bids. Is that correct?
Correct.
Perfect.
Can I piggyback on that?
I would love for you to.
Okay, thank you. That was very nice. So, Mark, in terms of the red and blue, pink and blue, whatever you want to call it, how did the bids come out compared to the estimate?
Actually, if I recall, the bids for one was within $1,000 of the engineer's estimate, and if I recall, it was .01%, and the other one was within 1% of the engineer's estimate.
So, those were the low bidders?
Yes. What we do is, we take the lowest qualified bidder, so bids are sealed. Our bids come in through a public electronic forum, and then we open them on Tuesday at 11:00, and again, there's sealed bids at that point, and we take them...
Why 11:00?
It's always just 11:00. Everything, every Tuesday at 11:00, we take in bids.
Okay. Well, I, so my question is, I actually have a copy of the bid sheets here, that the low bid, yeah, was 1% below for the red section, but the high bid was actually 12% above the estimate, right? So, there was a range of $1.2 million between the bids. And on the blue section, the low bid was very close to the engineer's estimate, but again, the high estimate was $8.3 million, which was 28% above the engineer's estimate. So, the reason that we're seeing this disparity in the bids is because you don't publish the estimates when you put out the bid specs.
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
Now, that being said, it is true that these estimates are public record, and they can be obtained through a FOIA at the township, but we checked the township records, and there were no FOIs.
And we had no FOIs in regards to blue or red either.
For the, for the engineer's estimate.
Correct. And there was, just for clarification, there was five bidders for each, the blue and the red phases.
Right. So, I just wanted to add that in there, so thank you for the opportunity.
Great. And then, a couple of the residents pointed out specifically, this is for you, Mark, if you don't mind, that the yellow section is costing significantly higher than the blue section, when it goes on per mile and per resident. Can we talk about some of the challenges that the yellow section has, that maybe the blue section did not have, or is it just timing associated with construction?
No, it's got to do with the public utilities structures, so the number that was in blue versus the number that are in the current phases, yellow and gold. Along with that comes, you know, soil erosion controls, the rehabilitation is by foot, so the lining that we're doing on the red brick structures there, the public utilities, which you have a combined system, it's a storm system and a sanitary system. It's the cleaning of those structures. So, when we got in there, we found that a lot of those structures had a tremendous amount of sediment, and the pipes weren't necessarily functioning properly because of the buildup of the sediment in there. It also, there's more sidewalk crossings within those phases than there was the other phases, the main line approaches. So, when we broke this thing up into the five phases, we had to figure out how to access each phase without, you know, utilizing the phases that were currently, or previously had been rehabilitated. These phases had definitely had more main line approaches than the other phases, blue and red. So, along with that, it's associated curb and gutter, M openings, et cetera, et cetera.
So, again, specifically for the yellow, yellow or gold, which we're talking about, it is, a lot of the costs are coming from underground infrastructure that wasn't as prevalent in the blue section, correct?
Correct.
Which is what's driving those estimate, the engineer estimates higher, which again, then, when you put it over the unit of benefits, which are 150, creates that higher cost basis.
And I will add that the main line approaches is a substantial cost.
Okay. Right. Thank you so much, Mark.
I do have some additional questions. Can you go into more detail about the pipes? You mentioned pipes as being a problem.
Well, what we found was not necessarily the pipes being a problem. What we found was, is that the structures themselves are decaying, so we had to figure out how to rehabilitate those structures. Obviously, the integrity of these, those structures are important to the road, so a lot of those structures are in the road, the manholes are in the road, the actual structures that are in the curb lines that take the stormwater, the runoff from the road, and also residence lots, et cetera, et cetera. And we found that a lot of those structures, instead of having the sumps in them like you're supposed to below the pipes, they were actually filled up to the pipe elevation, so those structures and the pipes weren't necessarily working the way that they should have been working, or the way they were designed to work.
In the sections that were already completed, were similar things observed?
Correct.
And in those sections, does anyone know from the township whether or not the drainage in those areas improved? Drainage, flooding, basement issues?
I don't think I've heard of any complaints, other than someone mentioned the other night that maybe there's some failing on some of the new pavement, and they were going to send me the information, but I haven't seen it yet.
Okay. But nothing about improved water drainage in the village?
Mark, has I...
I have not heard that there isn't. I haven't heard that there is. I can only imagine that it is an improved drainage system. We've rehabilitated the structures, we've cleaned the structures out. If you're not familiar with curb and gutter, which has been overlaid, basically is, in layman's terms, that's a pipe on top of the, on top of the surface. So, when that curb comes to a V, which we call the gutter, that's what takes the road water and takes it to the structures, which then gets into the storm system and, or into the combined system, and dissipates that water. So, that's not functionally happening. It didn't happen in red and blue previously because of the overlays. The other thing about an overlay that you should be mindful of too, is there's no grade control. So, when they come in and they put that material down, that material can be like this, they have no grade control at all to make water run, which probably attributed to a lot of the flooding that we hear about in the existing phases previous to rehabilitation.
Well, Mark, when they build the roads, am I correct, in that, like I remember when they built our roads, we had dirt. But they laid down half of it, and then they laid down the other half, but as I recall, because we had some drainage changes, good, you know, before and after, that it crowns a little bit, because you want that water to...
The road is actually back, probably, when we did your subdivision, we were probably still in a 2% crown. We've gone, we've actually increased to a 4.5% crown, so we've steepened that crown. The reason for that is, is we're trying to get, gain velocity and get the water off the road quicker to reduce any frost, or any freezing situations, or anything of that nature. So, I will say also, probably about three years ago, we've gone to a full width paving operation, so how we paved your road one half at a time, we've now made it a requirement for the contractor to pave that road in one pass. It eliminates the centerline joint, which I'm sure took place within your rehabilitation, where that joint ravels and comes undone. So, we've eliminated that, I say poor construction practice of having that centerline joint. Now, we've eliminated that.
Well, and I see the benefit of the curb and gutter, because we, they only did concrete curbs just at corners, like I'm on a corner, and then they raised the road up, it wasn't dirt, we had a lot of absorption in our old roads, because they were eroded. And then you guys crowned it, which is the right thing, but the water ran off and would come around my corner in a swirl. In fact, I actually contacted the county over it, and created a runoff into my lawn, and eroded my lawn, because the water was flowing so much better. But there was that impact, whereas the curb and gutter is going to direct it appropriately, so I'm envious about curb and gutter. Next time, I want curb and gutter.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Mark?
I have one question on the number of signatures. Did we receive any concerns regarding which properties from the residents that did speak up, and raise those concerns that these are the properties that we're concerned about, and did we give them a response?
It is my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, that there was no specific signatures challenged, but if there was, there is a process to have that corrected. So, I don't believe that detail is...
Right. So, we weren't given any actual addresses that are being referenced, but I can tell you, just to kind of run down real quick for you, of the Gold section, we had 26 instances of single signatures on the petition. 10 of those situations were where one spouse signed one petition, and a spouse signed another petition. So, the two signatures for one address were split between two petitions. Those were counted as one... Those were counted as one vote. What's that?
Does that vary by year, or is it the same request for signatures?
This is on the petition process. So this current petition for the gold phase, there were 20 petitions that were released. So Kathy held business hours, for instance. So a spouse may have gone and signed Kathy's petition number one. And then there were circulators who were circulating. So if they managed to have the other spouse sign at their house, the two spouses signed on two different petitions, counts as one vote. But both spouses signed. That's 10 instances of that. Two were house divided, one spouse signed and another one didn't, and those votes were not counted. One house was held in a trust, and the trustee signed that petition. And we have the trust document. We counted that vote. 13 were signed by someone that our records show is either a widow, a widower, a single person, or a divorced person, and those votes were counted. So that would account for 26 single signatures throughout all of the petitions.
Thank you.
So I have a couple of questions for Jen. So the blue and, we, we updated our SAD policy in '24, last year, right? The blue and red sections were considered part of the old policy. And these two sections are considered under the new policy. Is that correct?
No, we were initially putting them under the new policy, and since the petitions had been released before we signed on the new SAD policy, these retain the older rates.
Okay. So I just want to address one item as it relates to the old SAD policy, that there is a township administration and management fee that gets charged to the district. But that administration fee was 0.5%.
Correct.
Right? And that is used for covering in-house staff time, administration of the SAD for 15 years, and project management during the construction project. Okay? So since both of these sections are under the old policy, they would have a 0.5% township administration and management fee. Under the new policy, which will greenfall under the new policy? Or is that to be determined?
Yeah, that would have to be determined.
Okay. Well, under the new policy, it was changed that the fee would go up based on the size of the SAD, from 0.5% to 1.5%, depending on the size, and then 1% in the middle. But that's the new policy, and that's not applicable here. These SADs are under the old policy, which is 0.5%.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there questions, comments?
I have a couple of questions too, Jen, that you could probably help me with. Back to the policy, as far as transparency, does the policy say anything about township communications to the proposed district?
The policy states that we communicate when the petitions are released. We send out a letter to all of the residents in that specific district advising them that a petition has been released. And then we are to give 10 days' advance notice before any of the public hearings. Other than that, at any meeting, I, myself and Darren usually give out our business cards, and we are more than happy to answer any questions. I don't know that you would have anybody in the audience that would dispute. We communicate back and forth.
Right.
Obviously, some, you know, the FOIA policies are the FOIA policies. We can't just release certain things without it being FOIA'd, but we are more than willing to communicate and share whatever we are able to share outside of those sort of regulations.
Right. Okay. Well, thank you. So, and the, the mailing notice at the beginning of the SAD, that that part of the policy was filed in this instance?
Correct.
So every, every household in the proposed district, before petitions were even circulated, received information about the fact that it was coming, what to expect, what the rules were?
Absolutely.
Now, in addition, I, you know, I want to mention too, that prior to this meeting, my office mailed every house in each district a notice that there'd be this hearing, and invited them to participate. And we published twice in the newspaper a notice of this event.
Correct.
And we posted on the township website. So, I mean, you know, we did what we could do. Of course, the village and, and the people working on, in support of it also, were going door-to-door and talking about the process as well. So, but everything could be done. I was at the Friday meeting, by the way, and, and there were maybe 45 or 50 people there on a very snowy night, which was a nice to see, such engagement. And at that time, there was this discussion about how houses were, it was alleged that both owners, or both husband and wife didn't sign. And I have the documents that was gone through, that you went through and looked at all of these things again, and just reported it.
Yes.
You know, Kathy also looked at it, and separately, and found the exact same stuff.
Correct.
So I'm confident that the numbers, you know, there, there is a majority that were satisfying, by the way, both the number of houses and the frontage.
Absolutely.
So we do both. The RCOC only does one of those things.
Correct. We just, we're a budding frontage, strictly a budding frontage.
So someone who has a corner lot gets a bigger vote than someone who has a small, sort of just one frontage.
Correct.
So we're doing both for, ensure that the voices are, are heard. We're calculating both a number of houses and on frontage, and in both methods of calculation, they're over 50%.
Correct.
And with regard to the FOIA, you made that point too. It, you know, it's, it's, it's required, yes. It does, it, it's important in this instance because, you know, there are signatures and other potentially private information on these documents that we want to ensure are not just sent out. Also, all FOIAs are recorded and, and posted on our website. So it's the most transparent way to do it, because, so anybody could see that there was a FOIA, and there was a response. It's not just sort of like privately given to one person and not another. So that's the most fair and transparent way I can think of doing that, and to ensure that privacy is protected for, for those involved. And the information was provided, you know, promptly. I never heard any complaint that there was something missing or was, was delayed, but, you know, it was, it was promptly provided to those folks that asked for it. Yellow section, by the way, and, and gold, both, you looked at both those as far as the number of the...
We did, and I do have a tally on yellow as well.
Great. The only last thing I want to mention is, is, you know, well, Mark, I mean, is the county ever going to come in and repave these roads on county dollars?
Not to my knowledge, yeah.
Do you know of a time where they've come in and repaved a whole neighborhood on, on county dollars?
It's the reason that we, the SAD program was created at the Road Commission for Oakland County.
Yeah. And the county, the county does own these roads though, right?
Yes, they do. They are within jurisdiction of the Road Commission for Oakland County.
So I can understand the frustration, because I'm frustrated by that too. I mean, you know, these are roads that are owned, owned by the county. The county's not maintaining these roads from a, you know, construction standpoint. The county's not rebuilding them in these neighborhoods. So it isn't coming upon us. It's the only way to do it. It's, it's not how, when I sort of first got involved here on the Township Board, was a little surprised that, you know, that that's how it works, but is in fact how it works. It's, no one else is going to come in and repave our road, our, our neighborhood roads for us.
Yeah, unfortunately, federal funds can't be used towards subdivision roads, so...
Yeah. So thank you, everybody. I mean, as far as, who have been here today, it's, you know, such an articulate and passionate group of folks who have really fully explored both sides of this issue, because there are two different ways to look at this. And I, and I, I couldn't afford the money. It's, it's a lot of money. I don't really understand how that could impact people's homes. And, you know, it's, it's also really a great example of, in my mind, you know, local democracy at work. I mean, this is being decided by, to me, I'm voting with the majority. So, you know, the people in the, in the community had a chance to, to express their opinion through the petition process, through the EOI process, and a majority of folks have expressed support for it. And that's how big decisions are made in this country through this voting process. And so from my standpoint, as tough as that decision is, it would, it wouldn't make sense to me to go against the majority, since it has been calculated and verified that this is what the majority wants, both on frontage and on number of houses, so.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Jennifer, so what's the next step now?
We vote.
And then we go to what, what's...
So from here, once we have a vote tonight, I will hand it over to the Road Commission. They will put it to bid, I believe, the beginning of March. They have it out for three weeks, and then they will get back to us with their, with their selected bidder. From there, they will take it in front of their board. And then I, again, we requested the second public hearing for that first meeting in May. So we'll do our final hearing on assessment at that final meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Jennifer. Any other comments or questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to move...
I do have one other question. There seems to be a discrepancy between some of the residents on the vote tally. And I, I think it's important to make sure that the data is, is accurate. And my main concern is, it's enough to swing the verdict as a no vote instead of a yes Is there some way we could alleviate those concerns? Because the worst-case scenario is someone files in county court, and, and then that delays things even more.
Well, you know, everybody, as you've heard from our staff, you have to have confidence in our staff. It's been looked at by our assessing department, by our attorneys. I have 100% complete confidence in what they're telling us, and that the due diligence that have been provided by our assessment staff. Now, people, some of the residents who are against the project, and, you know, they're certainly entitled to have their reasons to be against it, and they may say, well, I, I don't believe that the signatures are legitimate. That's their prerogative. But at some point, we have to have confidence in who we have hired as our staff, as our experts, and I do. So, I mean, there's, I don't think there's anything else we can do. If they want to go to court, that's up to them.
Well, I, I would rather...
To the tax tribunal. Right.
Well, they could, could they possibly delay the project?
I don't see, I don't see how, but if they do, it's on their dime.
Because of a discrepancy that they feel is present?
Well, I think our assessing office has confirmed the signature. So they went back through them again today at the request from the meeting we had on Friday, and confirmed, correct, the signatures?
That's correct.
And they, they do it according to state law.
Well, and we, we have several of these projects every year, Mark. And between the fact that, I mean, in this particular case, they've got Kathy and her whole team and her whole board on top of it for information and for documentation from their personal side. But we've got Jennifer, and we've got the county, and we've got our legal staff. And at some point, we have to believe that they followed the letter of the law, because that's what they have to do. It's not like, well, we can just say, well, I think it's okay. They, I mean, and I've been through this personally, where they check the petitions. And if you haven't paid your taxes, your, your signature is null and void. At least that's when I did my petitions. That was one of the things. A neighbor signed, give me that, let me sign. They were in arrears in their taxes, so that signature does not count. It's a very strict legal process, and we don't, there's not a lot of room for opinion and, you know, I mean, you can...
I'm just saying also, I mean, since Friday, when we first heard this, there was no specific addresses given that there was a concern. But, but as Mike mentioned, you know, both Kathy and our own assessing department went back and, and at the, you know, the request of Mike and, Michael and I, and did a review to ensure that, that the, both the law was followed and our policy. And, and every address was considered where there was a question. And, you know, Jen's given us that report. I have a copy of the report here.
What's the, what's the name of the report, in case they would like to FOIA?
Well, anybody could, could get it. It's just their, you know, gold section lot with signature, with one signature on the petition.
SAD number 428.
Okay, unless there's anything further...
Yeah, if not, I'll take a motion to approve it.
I'll make a motion. I certainly want to, I appreciate everybody being here on both sides, because it certainly is a passionate and very expensive decision to make. And I understand that the costs are exceedingly high. And thank you, Mark, for helping to explain the differences between the different sections, because there are legitimate explanations when people have questions. With that said, and most importantly, we're, our job here, as most of us know, is to really go along with what the petition has, if, has a petition been provided to us that is more than 50%. We have 52% of the residents who are in favor of this SAD. Simple as that. There's been no proof of anything that's been unseemly. Everything's been done on the up and up. Everything has been legitimate. I have complete, again, confidence in our assessment department, in our experts. Everything's been done the way it's supposed to be done. And with that said, I'm making a motion that public hear, that the SAD number 428, that the 52% be approved?
Resolution number two.
Number two, thank you. And that this would be for a May 12, well, excuse me, the first meeting in May. First meeting in May for the next meeting regarding this.
Is there support?
Support.
Any further discussion? If not, we'll take a roll call vote on this one, okay? Martin, you want to take the roll call vote?
Sure. I will. Mark?
Yes.
Chris? Michael?
Yes.
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 Martin, yes?
Monica, yes.
Okay. It is approved, and it moves forward. Okay. Item number six, public hearing of Sesey Bloomfield Village Special Assessment District, number 429, presented by Jennifer Worthman. Jennifer, you're back.
I'm back.
Mike, do you want to see, we give him a second as well?
Oh, yeah, sure. Let's clear out for a sec.
Please.
Okay. We'll just take a short, two-minute break here.
Oh, I got a question for you, Ken. I meant to catch you before the meeting, but I didn't get a chance. So, hi, how are you? So, hi, how are you?
Good.
...to attention here for a little bit. We're going to restart our meeting, and thank you very much.
He likes that.
Jennifer, well, you got to get their attention here. Jennifer, why don't you go ahead and start talking, and we'll follow you.
Okay, thank you. We're going to go ahead and take a look at Phase Four, which is also the yellow phase for the Bloomfield Village road paving project. This is Special Assessment District number 429, and the public hearing of necessity. Phase Four is going to include part of Judson Bradways Bloomfield Village number two, part of Judson Bradways Bloomfield Village number nine, part of Judson Bradways Bloomfield Village number 10, Judson Bradways Bloomfield Village number 11, Judson Bradways Bloomfield Village number 12, and Red Oaks of Bloomfield Village subdivision. Showing a map of this district, you can see it runs in the northern part of the village. Phase Four contains 2.05 miles of public road, which includes Sandringham Way, Hemsworth Court, Cortley Terrace, Aberdoby Place, Twin Maples Lane, North Glengarry Road, East Glengarry Circle, Indian Mound West, Indian Mound East, Covington Road, Indian Mound Road, Indian Mound Trail, and Indian Mound South. The project is going to consist, again, of pulverizing the existing road and placing new asphalt pavement four inches thick over the aggregate base with a full-depth cold milling asphalt removal. Total curb and gutter removal and replacement, total underdrain installation with soded shoulders. Minor drainage improvements will be made to reasonably assure drainage of the pavement, and all shoulders and disturbed areas will be covered with topsoil and sod. A maximum five-foot approach will be constructed to existing driveways to provide a smooth Included a few pictures. And again, picture of the newly completed roads. Petition's been confirmed by the Township Assessor. It's supported by 56.01% of the homeowners, representing 54.30% of the road frontage. Estimated project cost is $8,353,116.15. There are 152 parcels in this district, 151 of those are being assessed, a full unit of benefit, which gives a tentative assessment of $55,318.65 per parcel receiving that full unit of benefit. Assessments can be financed over 15 years, and the interest is determined after bonds are sold. That interest rate will be 1% above the bond rate. Tonight, I am asking that you approve Resolution Number Two and schedule the public hearing of final assessment for the first meeting in May. I'm asking that you approve our agreement with the Road Commission of Oakland County, which allows them to finalize the plans and to bid the project. Any questions?
Any questions for Jennifer? If not, we will open up the public hearing and hear from members of our community. So, if you'd like to come up and speak in front of the microphone again, just state your name, address, and you have about three minutes. If you could keep it to three minutes or less, that would be great.
Hi, my name is Catherine Rowling. I live at 1233 Indian Mound East. I'm going to keep it real nice, short and sweet. It's work night, I have three little kids at home, everyone wants to go home, but I am just formally objecting to the project. I feel that a lot of people, they're probably not not moving into Bloomfield Village because of the roads, but they might not move into Bloomfield Village because our taxes are going to be $30,000 a year. So, just, I'm a young family, I'm a young family in my area. My area is, has, right now, the highest estimate. I realize it's just an estimate, but $55,000 compared to one of the other sections, that was 43. And I understand, it was nice to hear from the Road Commission of why there's a little bit more infrastructure underneath, but I will make a point that you did say one of the area, one of the reasons was because of the sidewalk crossings. Where I live, in Indian Mound, which is probably a good half-mile circle area, we don't have a single sidewalk in our area. So, that's just something to kind of keep in mind as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Tim Trenary. I live at 1220 Sandringham Way with my wife Denise. I am here to tell you that she and I echo the concerns that you've heard this evening regarding the special assessment, and disagree with the handful of favorable comments that have been expressed this evening, and therefore voice our formal objection to the assessment, and ask that you defer into decision on Resolution Two until the concerns you've heard tonight are more adequately addressed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bruce Miller, Twin Maples Lane. We've lived here for 40 years. We've spent a great deal of money improving our home, our property, and while that's gone up, the roads have deteriorated. The roads are so bad, even the deer are complaining. As a great politician once said, "Fix the damn roads." It is time to fix the damn roads. I yield back my time.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Mr. Miller? Mr. Miller? If you want to protect your right for an appeal, you should state your name and address. You don't need to, but if you want to protect your right...
He said Bruce Miller, Twin Maple Lane.
1267 Twin Maples Lane.
Thank you.
I have it. Thank you, Mr. Miller.
1267 Twin Maples Lane. Again, my name's Tim O'Hara, 1363 Aberdoby. I'm in the yellow section, and I do object to this ad. And we heard a lot about the curbs being buried, and the costs, and why it's more in the yellow section than the other sections, and I don't completely understand what Mark said, because I'm not a road builder, and that's probably true for most people. But I can tell you that Glengarry, parts of Glengarry, were not to be included in this road rebuild project. If you're familiar with the certain section of Glengarry, the road was rebuilt when they did the CSO. The curbs are in great shape, they're not paved over. Why you've got to completely tear them out and replace them beats me. You heard the word harmonious, and that's thrown a lot, thrown around a lot by trustees, because it's got to be harmonious, otherwise it won't get approved in the village. So, that's not the same for the road, because the association has no control over the roads. Indian Mound, the curbs aren't paved over, they're all exposed. The only paving that's gone on over the curbs in Indian Mound is where the owners have paved over the curbs so they don't bottom out their cars going into their driveways. That's been like that for years, and the owner of the road had no objection. That interferes with the flow of water to the catch basins. Nothing's happened. You know, that's fine, but again, the curbs, some of them may need to be replaced, I don't know, I'm not an expert, but they're not paved over. And the woman mentioned no sidewalks. We don't have sidewalks on the four courts off of Sandringham. So, why is our section $800,000 more than gold? And that's what you notice, is each sad comes forward, it's more expensive. And I just want to talk about the pictures that Jen showed for our section. The first two pictures you saw were of the first 100 feet of Sandringham, south of Corton. Same footage, two different angles. Next three were three courts, Cortley Terrace, Aberdoby, then Twin Maples. The last picture was Glengarry, where back in 2017, the township came in to upgrade the water system, did all the pipe bursting in certain sections of the road. They had to cut into the roads to do that pipe bursting, and we were told, "Don't you worry, you're never going to know that we were here." Guess what? I think it's really rich that now that's used in an example of our deteriorating roads. I mean, come on, every time somebody cuts into a road, it just deteriorates faster than everything else. And I could say the same about some of the gold pictures. There are six pictures of the 10 in the gold that aren't even in the gold section, they're in the green section. I bet you didn't know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
For a third time, again, thank you very much. Greg Kraus, 1375 Aberdoby Place, just placing my name, address, and objection on the record for the purpose of preserving my appeal. I guess I would add, you know, one request would be, well, I would make a request again that we, you know, take a minute, take a breath, and, you know, learn from the mistakes that inevitably were made on the final project, and, you know, look at the way that the cost is spread out. In the, you know, in my section, the yellow section, in the first three, as Tim referred to them as court roads, only one house signed to approve. And those are candidly more modest homes than some of the very large homes that, you know, we all aspire to have. And so, while I think that there does need to be improvement on certain parts of the road, I don't think that tearing down everything and rebuilding from scratch on every single square inch is the, you know, most cost-effective way to go. But thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kraus.
Hello, again, Board. David Dilly, 965 East Glengarry Circle. As I mentioned before, I am in approval of this. I do agree with Tim, though, on quite a few of his points. And I know he's, we have talked a little bit back in the past, but some of his points he made tonight are actually very good and very valid points. I do hope, as Mark had said, or I don't know if it's Mark or Chris, I do hope that our bids come in less than what they're supposed to be. I do hope some of our roads that are better, that they realize that it will come in cheaper once they do the actual assessment on it. Because I did talk to construction workers this summer, and they said the roads were awful, and I'm an engineer. I said, "How much can you tear up asphalt?" And they said, "Well, this guy's been here for 30 years, and this is the most he's ever seen." I think they got to 18 inches in one point or something. And they were hitting manhole covers, they even hit a four-by-eight sheet of steel, and totally ripped up the whole mill and just bent it up because they put it over a hole. So, I'm hoping our sections are not as bad. I'm hoping that maybe interest rates will go down. And I do hope, for everybody, right, that it is a burden, and I do agree with that, but I do know that we have to do something with our roads. So, thank you very much. And thanks to everyone who spoke and everyone who left.
Okay, any further comments? If not, we'll close the public hearing.
Kathy's car.
I'm sorry, Kathy, sorry.
Kathy Weisenborn, Village Manager. I reside on Hamilton Road. I just wanted to point out on petition results for the yellow section, one of the hardest parts about doing this signature gathering is actually getting a hold of people and getting the opportunity to speak with them. And in both of these situations, we had, while we have 54% yes in the yellow section, only 26% said no, and the other 20% we didn't hear from. So, this was not as close as it might appear to be, because there is a group that we didn't hear from. And we know from prior experience that a person that didn't respond doesn't necessarily mean a no vote. There is support in there. Sometimes life just gets in the way, and people don't have the opportunity to come in and sign the petition, or the volunteer doesn't catch them, or whatever. There is strong support here, and I, again, echo my previous comments, that I hope that you will choose to move forward with this project and honor the request of the majority. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else like to come forward and make a public comment? If not, I will close the public hearing on number 429 and open up for board comments and questions. Any comments? Questions? Mark, I have a question. Can you come up for a minute? Mr. O'Hara mentioned about Indian Mound, how they have curbs already, where we've talked about the other areas where the curbs are buried and the gut, everything's buried, but in Indian Mound, is that still the case?
There is some curb that's exposed. With that being said, so in this process, not knowing what the elevations of the existing curbs are and drainage structures, as somebody mentioned, there's structures that are buried that were plated off, et cetera, et cetera. We've hired a consultant to come in and actually do a topographic survey, we've used our crews also, to come in and do a topographic survey, and we are doing complete profiles of those roads out there. So, with that being said, there's adjustments to the curb and gutter, whether it's showing or it's not showing. There's adjustments to the curb and gutter to ensure proper drainage. So, we've really done our due diligence...
That's by laser, right? Isn't that, they shoot that by laser?
Yeah, yep. And we've really done our due diligence with the Bloomfield Village phases. We've never hired a consultant to help us with design on an SAD. We've never run profiles, et cetera, et cetera. So, these are all things that are unique to the Bloomfield Village project.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comment?
What about the areas, there was mention that some areas do not have sidewalks?
Yeah.
And the areas where there aren't sidewalks, how does that impact?
So, I want to be clear on the sidewalks. The sidewalks are not jurisdiction of the Road Commission, but we are required by the ADA Act to be compliant. So, when I refer to the sidewalks, it's in regards to the crossings at intersections or the crossings that the sidewalk crossed the road, which ADA requires us, if you're doing more than a half an inch of adjustment on anything, reconstruction, anything of that nature, ADA requires us to bring ADA complacency within 15 feet of each direction of that walk, including detectable warnings and et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
I just want to highlight what was said earlier, too, that with regard to the question concerning whether or not both husband and wife, they existed, signed, you did a review since Friday of the yellow section.
Absolutely, and I mean, I can just run down it for you really quick. We had 24 lots with one signature on a single petition. Eight of those were signatures that existed on two different petitions. Three of those were house-divided, they did not count. One, we could only get one spouse because the other lived up north, so that didn't count. One of them, a house sold, and we couldn't get the new owners, so that didn't count. And we had 11 that were widowed, divorced, or single.
Great. Thanks for doing that review.
Okay, if there's no other comments, I'll open up for a motion to approve, to move forward.
Make a motion that we approve SAD number 429.
And there's...
And that we have a, in the first, the first meeting in May, that we have a...
Public assessment.
Public assessment, yep.
Public hearing.
Thank you.
Public hearing.
Support.
Okay, and support? We have support. And Martin, will you do a roll call vote again, please?
Okay, Neil?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm yes. Mark?
Mark? Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes. Okay, passes. Okay, moving on, number seven. Consider approval of resolution to accept a petition to create a special assessment district for Werner Estates and schedule the first public hearing in the necessity presented by Jennifer Werthman.
Okay. This is the first time I'm bringing this one in front of you guys. I'm looking for acceptance of our petition to create the special assessment district for road paving. We're calling this Werner Estates. It also includes Overbrook West.
We're calling this Werner Estates. It also includes Overbrook West. Enclosed is a map of this jurisdiction. Again, you're going to see Werner Estates in there, and then up at the north part is also Overbrook West. This district is going to include Werner Estates, Werner Estates number one, Werner Estates number two, Werner Estates number three, Overbrook West, as well as certain parcels of property that are not in those subdivisions. This district consists of 2.9 miles of public roads, including Stonely Road, Barchester Drive, Ardmore Drive, Ardmore Court, Brightmore Road, Brightmore Court, Sandhurst Road, Conmore Court, Compton Way, and Werner Court. Again, the project consists of pulverizing the existing road, placing new asphalt pavement four inches thick over the aggregate base with full-depth cold milling asphalt removal, total curb and gutter removal and replacement where it exists, total underdrain installation and sodded shoulders. Minor drainage improvements will be made to reasonably assure drainage, and all shoulders in disturbed areas will be covered with topsoil and sod. Maximum five-foot approach will be constructed to existing driveways to provide a smooth transition for the newly paved roadway where necessary. I've included a few pictures from this area. This petition has been confirmed by the Township Assessor. We are supported by 59.76% of the homeowners, representing 60.41% of the road frontage. I will also include that I have roughly six signatures that I was unable to verify, so this is likely a higher percentage. We just did not pursue trying to get those homeowners in to re-sign. Estimated project cost is $3,985,585.40. There are 164 parcels in this district. Gives a tentative assessment of $24,302.35 for a full unit of benefit. In requesting that we accept this petition, we approve resolution to create SAD number 431 and schedule the public hearing of necessity for February 24th of 2025.
Wonderful. Thank you, Jennifer. Any questions for Jennifer? Any comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution to move forward with the Werner Estates SAD.
I would make a motion that we approve the new petition for the SAD for Werner Estates, SAD 301.
We accept the petition.
In public hearing.
And public hearing.
Instead of a public hearing. Is there support?
Support.
Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Moving forward. Item number eight. Consider approval of purchasing a new sewer camera presented by Paul Horn.
Good evening, board. Welcome new members as well. As part of our equipment replacement schedule, we're looking to replace our aging sewer camera. In our current budget, we have, we have currently budgeted $125,000 for the purchase of a new sewer camera. The sewer camera is used frequently to inspect the condition of our sanitary sewers, and is a reliable, a quality reliable sewer camera is a vital piece of our operations. With that said, staff recommends the board approval for the purchase of the Q's C550 sewer camera for the amount of $97,307. This sewer camera will be purchased from M-Tech, who is the exclusive supplier of the Q's sewer camera. This purchase will be made through CoPro Plus, who is the purchasing consortium to ensure the best price possible. Do you guys have any questions?
Any questions on the board?
No. It's just nice to see, Paul, you get that excited about a sewer camera.
I do. I do. When you upgrade, you know, the technology, you know, ours current one is about 13, 12, 13 years old. So newer technology.
Higher definition.
Higher definition.
So you're going to get a better picture and...
Better. We'll be able to see stuff better. You know, I can't stress the importance of keeping update on this stuff. You know, for instance, we, you know, during our inspections, we were able to find a crack in the sewer in Maple Hills, and we got it lined before it was ever collapsed. So we repaired about 1,300 feet, you know, by doing these inspections.
You're going to get even more ahead of it.
Correct. We've got to think long-term, because this is something that will happen every year, every month, for even long after we're gone.
Well, and in addition, you came in like 26% under budget on your cameras.
Correct, yes.
You're making it more and more exciting tonight to approve for you.
Yep, yep. And this will be fitted in our current sewer truck. So we're keeping our current sewer truck.
Oh, that's important.
Just replacing the camera, so.
Make a motion that we approve the...
One last thing.
Go ahead, sorry.
Thank you. So the camera, by the way, this helps you spot issues before they become more serious, so that you could do a lining, which doesn't require digging up the road.
Correct.
And I was told, and not by you, but someone else, but maybe you can confirm this, that you guys, because of the nature of the village sewers being combined, you guys are, you know, taking your camera over there more often than many other places.
Well, that, that, well, the combined sewer area is owned by WRC and RCOC, because it's a combined, yes.
Got it, got it. So is there other sewer sewers in that area that are owned by us?
Um...
Or they're all combined in the village?
I believe they're all combined in there. I'd have to get back with you on that, but I believe most of those are combined.
But this is our own sewer camera.
Correct. Yes.
And they, they use a camera to scope out the, WRC uses the camera to...
Oh, yeah, yeah. They got, every community, every municipality, like, they have the, they have the same, maybe not the exact same camera, but the same system. So, but yes, that would be used to inspect that as well.
Okay, okay. Make a motion that we approve purchase.
I've got a few questions.
Oh, go ahead.
Do we have just one truck?
One sewer camera truck? Correct, yes.
And are we, what's the savings from having the system compatible with the current truck that we have?
As opposed to buying a new truck?
Well, for example, if I was replacing just the system, you'd want to make sure compatibility with the existing system. Is the current camera the same, from the same provider?
No, no. They're different, they're different brands.
Okay.
Hey, Paul, why don't you explain to him what kind of truck it's in, and how this can just go in and out of that truck, so he understands that's a savings. I think that's what he's getting at.
I got you. So basically, it's installed in a, basically of a box truck, a cube truck, right?
Okay.
And basically, the old one will just be taken out. Actually, they're going to purchase it from us, because it still has good life into it, some life. And the private companies do rebuy this. That's another reason why we like cycling these out sooner before they start, you know, breaking down too much. But basically, everything just gets gutted out of there, and the new one just goes in. And it basically just fits right in the side, couple mounting brackets, whatnot, and that's pretty much it. And then whenever we need it, we just drive the truck there, and then wheel out the camera. It's got, you know, I believe it's got like a thousand-foot cable on it, and it just wheels it right down the sewer.
Okay. And is there, did we look at other models, or just this one?
Correct. We did look at, well, we knew the current model we have. We also looked at another, an IBAC, I believe that's what it's called. So we've looked at multiple cameras. And this, this one itself was actually able to, we brought them out here into our, there's a sewer out here in our parking lot, that we've always had kind of issues with, just the way it's designed. It's kind of like oval-ish, and some, our current camera had trouble getting through there. So that was kind of our test with some of these vendors, right? And the Q's was able to, with a different set of wheels, and that's the good option that we have with, with the new Q's, is depending on the conditions of the sewer, you know, if it's oval-shaped, maybe there's some sediment in there, we can, we can change the set of wheels on there to get more grip, more grip, and be able to get through a lot more stuff. So the Q's was actually able to get through more problem areas than the other cameras that we historically have gotten, had trouble with.
Technically, I, I like the idea that you tried them out. I would, though, appreciate understanding what other models that were considered.
Okay.
And I believe our purchase policy, from a technical standpoint, it sounds like it's a better system for some of the unique features. And I would appreciate having that spelled out for the board.
I got you.
The next time.
Okay.
It goes through.
Great. Thank you, Mark. Okay. Any other comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Thank you. Actually, I thought you made it very clear that it's better technically. I appreciate that, and I would like to make a motion to approve that. Support.
Support. Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. On to number nine. Consider board policy for utilization of a consent agenda presented by Martin Brook.
Hey. There's a memo in the packet, and I proposed a policy. A consent agenda is an accepted method for public bodies and private bodies and charities to address routine, non-controversial items. Our policy that I'm, that we've drafted here, which was reviewed by the elected officials and all the department heads, proposes that the clerk supervisor and treasurer, at our judgment, working together, could populate a consent agenda with items that are, again, routine and non-controversial, in our opinion. And that it could include purchase requests and contract items when they are routine and non-controversial, because they comply with the policy. It's the warded to the qualified vendor making the lowest bid, and it's within the approved budget. So this could save, you know, the board time to work on and pay more attention to other items on our agenda. And any item, by the way, on a consent agenda that a board member feels should be discussed could be removed from the consent agenda. So if, you know, if that ever happens, the possibility for a full discussion is always present at each, at every time. And I don't know if anyone has any questions. I mean, we, my office looked at policies at about a half dozen other communities, and learned about many, many, many others that do this. I have experience from the Bloomfield School District Board of Trustees that has been using a consent agenda forever, including the time I served on the board. And I propose that we, here in the township, adopt a consent agenda to better and more efficiently utilize our time as a board here together.
Okay. Any comments or discussion? Chris?
I just want to thank you for looking into this and looking at how other communities implement this. Again, we're not the only community doing this. This isn't like we're the first crack at it. Other communities utilize this all the time and do this so that we can continue to focus on these other issues that are pressing to our residents, but then utilize that time appropriately. So I really appreciate you taking the time and due diligence to do this, so I thank you for this.
Thank you.
So I guess when I read it, and then, you know, hearing from some of the residents tonight, is, you know, one of the things we hear a lot is transparency. And I think, you know, the consent agenda, you said we can take things back off of it, but we still have to be able to see it or know about it, and if it's already...
So everything that's on that will have the same packet material as everything else? And if you want a full discussion on any item, you can have a full discussion on the item. There's no less transparency in this process than some things separately listed on the agenda.
It's really, it's really packaging items like in all one item. So you may take five items and put it in one item, and then you trustee Murray sees, "I'd like to take out number four and bring it back into discussion and make it another agenda item." You could do that.
But we would still get the same packet with all the same detail.
Same detail.
Yeah.
Because I think that's a real concern where...
And that's in the policy, too.
That's kind of what, you know, trustees are here for, because we don't work here, so we don't know everything every day, and...
And in addition to that...
So, yeah, item F specifically covers that, the same detailed materials.
And the public would still get the same...
Public gets the same information.
Yep.
So the only benefit is just that our meetings would go a little bit quicker, because, I mean, what is the benefit? If we package them, but we still see them, but we can pull them out?
The meetings should be more efficient and effective in the use of our time here, and the staff wouldn't need to be here if it's on a consent agenda item. It provided a full memo. It's a routine item, so the staff would not be here.
Can you, you said routine item, can, because I don't think a lot of the things we approve are usually routine. They're like fire trucks and flock cameras, and, you know, those are not routine. So what kind of items are you, you know, I just, I'm trying to understand what are we going to say?
Sure, on this agenda, there's, there's not really a lot on this agenda. I mean, the minutes are a routine item. That would be on a consent agenda.
Well, I mean, would, I mean, would number eight, the one that just presented?
Yeah, the sewer camera, right?
It's possible.
That could be.
That could be. It's possible.
It's below a threshold. It's, you know, other, I mean, Val, to answer your question, there are things that we do every year by matter of requirement, let's say. There are certain things we have to, you know, approve. You know, one example could be approving the bank that we deposit the tax money in. And it's the same bank and the same resolution, and it's been that way for, you know, that's the kind of thing that would, you know, in that case, I'm here. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't, you know, save a staff member coming to come. But there are, I'm trying to think of other examples.
Well, like the perfunctory, almost annual maintenance for the medians, cutting seasonal, seasonal contracts, for example. That's one. Another one, some of our contracts with Oakland County, which are just done as a matter of routine. Nothing changes, but legally, we just have to approve these on an annual basis. So that's another example.
Senior center every year has to come and do a, you know, a presentation to set up public hearing, and then come back for the public hearing. The item to set the public hearing would be a consent item, the public hearing would be an agenda item. I mean, there are lots of routine things that are happening, you know, each meeting.
Yeah, I guess I'm just not clear that if it's on there, I don't know, it doesn't, other than saying that if we don't have to have a staff member come, I'm not sure really how much we're saving and the risk of the transparency and what are we...
There's no less transparency. There's just, not at all.
We're just grouping things together.
Same material is put in the packet. The packet's put in the same time as it's posted before. The ability of board members to come ask the same questions beforehand as they could.
So my question is, how much is this really going to save us to go to this, to this new agenda?
Well, I think that it depends on the agenda and the week. There are savings. There's, could be larger or smaller, depending on, depending on the meeting. And I think, you know, my opinion anyway, would be to start pretty slow on this. We, you know, we're not, we're going to try to put the most obvious things on there and build as we become more used to it. Because it is a new thing for this board. It's a very old, accepted process that almost everybody does but us. So...
So we would just, like, the routine of approving the minutes, we would just...
Do one vote instead of two.
Oh, wow. Okay. So it's still, we'd still approve the minutes, but because there's two, we wouldn't have to do it two times?
Right.
All right. Okay. That's what I was looking for. I was looking, you know, like an example that, what, you know, what would we be changing?
Right. So the routine items go into the consent agenda. We vote once on it, and all the items are passed at that one time.
Martin, I think it may help. All the items in the consent agenda, it's one motion to approve the consent agenda, and that's it.
Everything is bundled together.
In a certain degree, the memos from, like, department heads and stuff will be more precise, because they'll actually be recommending a motion. So there would be more disclosure on what's being sought at that point.
Okay. All right. That helps.
Do you see other, other townships that you support? Do you see them used?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
How, I mean, how common? How long has this been around?
You're one of the few that doesn't.
I wasn't familiar.
As long as Robert's Rules have existed, and as long as boards have been meeting.
Oh, really? Robert's Rules, I'm very familiar. That's been around forever.
150 years.
It's nothing new.
I've got a few questions.
Mark, can I just hold a second?
Yeah, sure.
Did the microphones just go on?
It just got louder.
Was it because the room emptied out? Or have you always, have you been able, Nick and Paul, have you been able to hear us back there tonight through the microphones?
I think it's the people in the room.
I think the fact that the room's empty.
Okay. Sorry to interrupt you, Mark.
It's position, too.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. I apologize.
No, that's, that's not an issue. The, typically, on the new and old business, those are separate items on the consent agendas? At least from what I saw in Birmingham, they're not one light item?
No, that's, that's a good point. And I combine them under item five, simply because sometimes there is no unfinished business. It's, you know, the next item here will be new and/or unfinished business. You're right. They'll be separate on the agenda, but oftentimes, almost every time we have a meeting, there's no unfinished business. But you're right, yes. But you're right, yes, both are there and they will be separate.
Okay. And I'm assuming unfinished business would be before new business? As typical?
I'm fine with that. I hadn't really thought about which one would go first.
Okay.
But I can't actually think of an example of unfinished business, but it's an item on the agenda.
I think the only thing we had was that tabled item, that tabled lot split.
For what it's worth, the other communities that I've attended the meetings where they have the consent agenda, it is just one, one item.
Okay.
It's new, new and old business combined.
Okay.
Okay.
So, I mean, I can...
But that's not part of the consent agenda.
I can double check that.
There's the consent agenda, and then there's new business.
Okay.
Right.
Right.
I've only seen one consent agenda.
Right, right.
On most of the meetings that I attend.
Yes.
So...
And then what's the process for removing prior to the consent agenda? Is there a vote to, is there a...
So when we got to the consent agenda, any member could express a request to remove an item.
Okay.
And it would be removed.
Well...
Then addressed separately later on in the meeting.
Okay. And I'm assuming also that the consent agenda items would go before, that are removed, would go before the new or unfinished business?
Well, the policy doesn't address specifically where it goes, just that it goes somewhere else in the meeting. The reason why is so that we could have, like, for instance, we could have a full house for firefighter promotions or something, and we wouldn't necessarily want it immediately after the consent agenda because we'd want to do the firefighter thing first, so it might be at another spot at that meeting instead of right after.
Agreed. But I would, the individuals that are waiting to see if something is removed from the consent agenda, the idea is that they can depart immediately once it's approved. So it's a benefit for the staff, and I want to make sure that the ones that do have to stay, that we address those issues first and keep going. I, I'm just want to make sure I understand how the...
The thought is that we said it was that where it went on the agenda would be something we would sort of all decide.
Okay.
At that meeting.
Okay.
One iteration earlier said it would happen, it would be handled directly after consent, and then the point was made about other competing issues and visitors and so forth, so we left it open to this board to decide that, you know, where it'll go.
Okay.
Likely the chairperson would first make, say, "Well, let's put it right after," or "Let's put it somewhere else," and then we'd all kind of...
Agree to it. That's fine, I'm just trying to understand the process.
Absolutely, good question.
The, regarding residents, can a resident request that something be removed and discussed?
No. They can come to public comment and make their request.
Okay.
And as a result, one of us could remove it.
Okay.
Yes, but their statement doesn't effectuate that removal.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, any other comments?
So as you noticed, two public comments before the consent, so...
Correct.
There's an opportunity to discuss for someone to make a request and one of us to act on it.
Okay, any other comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to adopt the Board of Trustees' Consent Agenda Policy in the packet.
Support.
Support. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item number 10. Consider Adoption of Township Paid Parental Leave Policy, Presented by me. So I was looking at some ideas that other municipalities but private industry practice with their employees, and that is paid parental leave, and there's an explanation of it in your packet tonight. And we're trying to retain employees, but at the same time, we're trying to recruit employees, so we have to be competitive with some of our benefit packages. We currently had a program, if, let's say if you did the, it shows the Family Leave Act, you can take a leave of absence, but you're not compensated while you're gone. We had a program here where you could take a short-term disability along with up to one week of your own vacation time, forty hours, and if it's a natural birth, it's six weeks, if it's a C-section, it's seven weeks under the short-term disability, as I understand it. So collectively, you can get seven to eight weeks as a birth mother, and I assume, was that adoptive parent also? I'm not sure.
Yes.
Yes, okay. And we aren't competitive with other municipalities, we're not competitive with the county. County offers 12 weeks paid leave, and we are not competitive, I don't think, in our private, private practice. And one of the concerns I heard from the directors from their, that they were expressing from their department staff, is they were kind of shocked and dismayed that we didn't have some sort of parental leave. And also, when I was out knocking doors, I saw dads out pushing their little newborn babies, because we had such a beautiful spring and summer, if we all remember, and fall, and they were able to spend time with their newborn. And right now, we don't have any parental leave for, if you're a father, it's pretty much just for the mother. This allows now, what we're proposing is up to 120 hours of paid leave from the township, along with they could take one week of their vacation time, forty hours, and then qualify still for the short-term disability at 70%, which would lead us up to 10 and 11 weeks for the mother, and at least three, 120 hours of paid leave for the other parent. So if I can answer any other questions, or if you have any thoughts of it, we're here to listen and answer.
No, I just think it's about time that we are considering this. I think we've been way behind on the times, and in order to be more competitive, both with the private sector and other municipalities, and also beyond that, just to show that we are a caring community and municipality for our employees. I think it says a lot in a positive way for us, and I'm certainly very much supportive of this.
Thanks, Neil. Chris?
So I really appreciate you bringing this up. This came up during our compensation and benefit study, and we were way behind. And the fact that we were able to address it, just like we were able to address some of our pay discrepancies within the township, is another thing we're able to tackle right away. I appreciate that we're able to take into account both parents associated with this, both fathers as well, as well as mothers, and it also, if we do enact this, takes into account any parents or any employees we may have, that are going to be affected by this immediately. That's a big deal to me, because there are people here that may be going on, or maybe having a baby, or maybe starting this process, this takes the uncertainty out of it for them. And again, we have a high standard for our employees here, we need to offer high benefits in order to retain and recruit them. So I think this will match what we already expect out of our employees, and now they can expect that out of us as a board. So I'm very happy that you brought this to us, and I thank you for that.
Yeah, definitely private sector, we're behind that for sure. I mean, my first son is now 28 years old, and I, my employer at the time provided this leave, you know, paid leave for me.
Oh, wow. Yeah, that was on the...
A little more leading edge maybe at that time.
I didn't get anything, and I had the baby, you know, so...
Even as a parent, I was able to get leave like this, that was paid.
Wow.
So I'm glad that we're able to get up to the time.
I do have a specific motion I want to make, but when we get to it, but if...
Any further?
The only other question would be, you and I talked about this privately, and so, you know, letting people have some time off, it doesn't, it isn't like an outward cost to us directly, except that the 70% disability, how does that impact our budget?
That's already in place. That's already in place.
That's already available. So that's not an addition.
And that's just for the, that's just for the birth mother, or I believe one adopted parent. But the, if there's another spouse involved, whether it's a father or a mother, mother, father, father or something, it, one only qualifies. This allows both parents to qualify for 120 hours.
Okay, that's the difference, okay. Because I was saying, it's not a change if we already do it. All right, thank you.
Yeah, we're just adding on.
So the 120 hours is for both, the birthing mother or the adopting parent, and the disability is only for the mother.
A short-term disability.
So the, the partner or father has the 120 hours.
As well.
As well.
Correct.
Okay.
And then they can take a week of their own vacation time.
Vacation time. And then I noticed that you have the 30 days notice. What if there's, I want to make sure that the moms and dads are protected, because sometimes kids come earlier than expected.
Good point.
That's a good question.
So I don't know the right wording, but...
Well, it says that the 30 days written notice to their department and HR benefit administrator as to their intent to use paid leave, so...
Not the date it starts, right?
Not necessarily the date that they're starting.
Intent can be months before.
Well, yeah, and it's, you're going to know, but I agree with Mark bringing up the question, though, because all of my grandkids were born premature, yeah.
But as the language says, provide at least 30 days notice to your written department head and to the HR benefits administrator as to intent to use. So upon knowing that you're pregnant or going to be having a baby or adopting, I believe the process is a little more than 30 days, so in most cases. Now, the only cases would come in is if somebody's adopting somebody, and if you're on adoption, sometimes that is a shorter window. And I think that would be, again, intent and as, you know, that would be the only one I've ever seen, is people that are adopted, sometimes they are not given a ton of notice associated with that adoption, especially with a young child.
They know that they're adopting.
You know, you can be on the adoption list for a year or two, people that I've known. They are given hours' notice.
I know someone who got a phone call next day.
So maybe that would say, "I'm in the adoption process, here's my intent to use."
Harsh about it.
So that would be the only thing. Again, our intent is the good thing. I would, I would defer to you and our HR administrator to understand that our intent is to give this to our employees, and I'm not going to knick-knack words because we're trying to do the right thing.
You know what, I'm going to go back to our labor attorney and that, because what the only thought, and I think Mark's, what he's getting at, is we need to have as much notice as possible, which is helpful.
For planning.
But what I'm, just, I was asking Mark about is HIPAA violations.
Yeah.
And I don't want to, you know, so let me get back to you on that, Mark, and we'll see if we can define it or if we have to follow...
We want to clarify the policy to make sure that in emergency or short-term notices, that those employees are not adversely impacted.
Okay, but having said that, we'll go back and correct that, but I'd still like to push...
HIPAA, you know.
Yeah, okay.
I'm going to add that like a...
Are you...
Or as soon as practicable.
Soon as practicable, get back.
Yeah, soon as practicable, yeah, okay.
But now, those changes, it's like I have the concern about the adoption because of the short-termness of it, this wouldn't stop you from wanting to institute this now, because we do have people that are currently going to be getting this benefit.
The idea is to, yeah, they should have the benefit, but we want to make sure that the language protects in unusual circumstances the parents.
Great point.
Yeah, thanks, Mark.
I think you're the one who has the motion, right?
I do. You ready? So, oh, I want to make another point, too, which is this, this policy is being implemented if we pass it, and our condition is that it's, you know, this is a unilateral offer, it's subject to the letters of agreements by the unions, which includes a phrase that this is also subject to the township withdrawing the policy as, you know, if necessary, depending on the situation. So it'll become part of negotiations as we go forward, but presently, we're essentially reserving our right to modify, change, or reverse the policy. And the example letter of agreement is in the packet, there'd be one for each union that basically lays that out, that says, "Here, we're implementing this, but presently reserving our right to modify, change, or cancel."
And what about parents that are currently on disability? And how will that impact them as well?
So the policy is written to allow that it would cover anybody who's presently out on leave.
Okay. Okay, good.
Kicks in.
Well, what if they're already 10 weeks or six weeks or whatever into it? It doesn't go backwards, it goes from today forward.
They're already back at work.
Well, no, if, say they're halfway through.
If they're out on leave presently, then it covers them. They would have access to this policy, the way it's written.
100% of it forward. You see what I mean? If they've already been out a month.
The part that they have access to is essentially is the paid part. That part wasn't available, the other parts will already be counted, so that, you know...
Okay. Okay.
Yeah. Okay. So I move the Board of Trustees' approve the adoption of the proposed paid parental leave policy, the change that was noted by Mark, and subject to legal and administrative review, and that we authorize the clerk and supervisor to execute the letters of agreement. Example provided in the packet.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, great, thank you. And I know our employees thank you as well, I'm sure. Item number 11, and just to point a reference, now, this is an item that could go into a consent agenda, I believe.
I think so.
Yes, okay. Consider supporting the Regional Transit Authority of Southwest Michigan fiscal year 25, Rebuilding America Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity Grant Program, Presented by Mike McCready, me. We put this in here because we get this request, I think it's annual, and we're just kind of going through the process. And this is an example of being able to use this in a consent agenda, that we just put it in and approve it with some other items that are pretty simple in nature. So if there aren't any questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
I, support. Thank you, and support, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Nope, okay, pass, thank you. And item number 12, approve payroll and vouchers for January 13th, 2025.
So moved?
Moved, any questions or comments?
I just have my, I have my same comments. I do, I would like to know what's going on with the payroll section, which departments are paying money out and how much. I went back to last year, the report, the quarterly reports, the one that was released in end of January. This would have been the year to date to December 31st. On that report, Public Safety had 29, almost $29 million, I believe, in expenses. The starting fund balance was 14 million, oh, I'm sorry, 27 million, 14 million in fund balances at the beginning of the year. So where does the other money come from to fund that? In the budget, we approved 10.5 million, that's about a two and a half million shortfall. I know the numbers at the end of the year balance out, but the fund reserves should cover the expenses until we collect the taxes. The level of detail is not there, and I think we should understand where the money is and what's actually being used to paid, being paid out in that fashion. So that's my opposition there. I don't think the, I don't think approving water and sewer rates constitute, constitutes approving the purchasing of meters. That project was never properly approved according to our purchase policy, so I do object on the payments to SLC meter. I do know we do have to make that payments, but we do have to follow the purchase policy. And lastly, the Orion LTE fees. People with two meters are paying the same amount as people with one, and based on what's on the Badger Meter site, that, that's a per meter based fee. So I don't think that our fee structure is appropriate, and I think if you have two meters, you should be paying additional for that, and the single meter payer should not be subsidizing that.
Mark, would you email me those questions, please, so I can look into them a little deeper?
Okay.
The meter, the meter situation, I'd like to kind of dig into and find out about, get some more education on that as well.
The, yes, last year, we had on the agenda approval of a second meter fee.
Yeah.
And that was not passed, so I don't know how we can even approve a project based on changing meters when we can't address the fees for the new meters, especially the second ones.
I don't have an answer at this point, and I'd like to go to our, get our finance director if he was here and sure could answer for us.
Yeah.
Ernie? Ernie?
No, I'm, I'm just sorry, just listening to what Neil said.
No, I just don't think it's relevant to, that, that's a whole other issue as far as the meters, because it will be discussed when we get to the water, when we get to the water rates.
Coming up in April, I believe it is, right?
Yeah.
The meter replacement program, you know, was an agenda item, it was discussed and authorized, you know, the meter replacement program is, you know, was, was addressed. So we're, as Mark, as you've said, I mean, these are bills incurred, as, you know, we have to pay our bills.
We have to pay our bills, but we, we never followed the purchase policy.
Well, I think we did at the time, we did. But these are a reflection of things that happened before you got here and so I get it. I mean, there's, there's just...